All right, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. 6:01 PM, we'll go ahead and bring the July 8th meeting to order. And before we take roll call, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. And Connor is, well, there's kind of a bit of an echo. Sorry about that. Connor's in the control room, and so Connor, if you would do roll call for us, please.
Absolutely. Roll call for today's City Council meeting. Stacy Anderson?
Present.
Mirta Basara?
Present.
Bob Campbell?
Here.
Daniel Carlino?
Present.
Sarah Farmer?
Present.
Gwen Jones?
She is in the building printing off something. I can see her down the hall.
Kristen Jordan?
Present.
Eric Nelson?
Mike Nugent?
Present.
Jennifer Savage? Amber Sherrill?
Present.
And Sandra Vasika?
Present.
And we have a court.
Thank you, Connor, for confirmation. Counselor Milson and Counselor Savage are not in attendance this evening. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on. We do have no minutes for approval this evening. And item number three is announcing changes to committee meeting agendas and committee member approvals. Connor, you mentioned that we don't have any committee updates to our committee schedule. I'll just verify that again.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. So, folks, all of our committee schedules are available online and on our website. You can take a look at what is queued up for this Wednesday's City Council committees and all of the items that accompany. Hold on one sec. We're having some feedback. Okay, testing? How's that sound? All right, sounds good. A little bit of Star Trek moment. Okay. So we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is special presentations and proclamations. And we do have some folks from neighborhood councils this evening. We also have a proclamation. This is a good opportunity for me also to queue up the cadence of the meeting, let folks know what's happening. So in addition to our special presentations and proclamations, we do have three public hearings this evening. Two of those public hearings are public hearings in which other jurisdictional law requires that city council provide the public hearing for that item, but we have no, city council has no decision-making space. And then there is one public hearing for our code amendments response to the spike in youth cannabis use. And then really, the meeting, we have some fairly typical consent agenda items. I know of one item we're gonna separate for vote on consent agenda. And then under regular business, we do have, under the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee report, the Corner Farm Open Space Project consideration. So with that, we will go ahead and move on with our neighborhood council updates. And I would invite the Miller Creek Leadership Committee to be here, if they're here tonight. Come on up, please. I'll make sure the microphone is on, and just please say and spell your last name, please.
Okay.
There we go. Try, let's try that one more time.
Jennifer Pfeiffer, and my name is spelled P-F-E-I-F-F-E-R.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I was just kind of told that I should do this like the other day, so.
All right.
Last, I think like the main thing that everyone is discussing right now is the infrastructure planning stuff. So we invited Erin Wilson with the Mobility Planning Manager to talk about traffic concerns existing and foreseen at Highway 93 and Lower Miller Creek Road where Walmart is. So there's a lot of, I don't know, if you live up there, you kind of know how slow the light is and how it's just getting a lot more congested. So that's, that's something that we talked to him about at our last meeting. So I imagine that he will take our concerns. And in June, we discussed the Neighborhood Action Plan Guide and process to create the plan. We talked about who was gonna take part in helping write the plan and that it's gonna take more time than really maybe just our initial meeting. So we have specific people that are gonna take part in beginning to write that, that plan. Our general meeting will be in September, most likely at the park across from Jeanette Rankin School. So we'll begin planning that probably next week. Our next Tuesday is our meeting, and that's when that'll start happening, start planning, meeting that. We had our Neighborhood Cleanup Day in April, end of April. Rain hampered the participation of that, so it was, it was kind of a really low turnout. We decided maybe, or talked about changing it to include like fall leaf cleanup, so maybe pushing it from April to, to early fall to get, because honestly, in the past, it just doesn't fill up the, the whatever, roll-off. So we need to get more participation, I think that partly that. And our next meeting is Tuesday, the 16th, at fire station number five.
Wonderful. Ms. Pfeiffer, you did great, thank you very much. Before you go, just see if anybody has any questions. Yes, Counselor Campbell, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am mayor. And thank you so much, Ms. Pfeiffer, for your efforts in Miller Creek. Two of the issues you spoke of, one being the issue of Highway 93 in Miller Creek. I've received numerous complaints, especially that left turn going on to 93. Contact with Jeremy Keen, that's on the radar, so to speak. But of course, part of the issue is the fact that it's a federal highway. But I mean, it's something that's gonna be looked at. I did have opportunity to come out for your spring cleanup, and I was glad to get out there and picked up, more than anything else, alcoholic beverage containers and cans and bottles along Lower Miller Creek there. So it was great to get out there and take part in that, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, our kids picked up a lot of construction garbage up in our, so they, they did their part. Yeah, yeah, that we, I think that was not known to a lot of our members and a lot of people that we talked to is how hard it's gonna be to get anything done at that intersection because it's two different jurisdictions. So having that explained was really helpful.
Wonderful, glad to hear that. Counselor Anderson?
Okay, well, now that we're continuing that conversation.
Sorry, yeah.
No great things to talk about forever. Oh, yes, no, I, as Mr. Campbell pointed out, we hear a lot about that here and there in Ward Five. And the other big issue is that there had been, at one point in time, a discussion about a bridge going in and that would kind of put you out at where roughly Blue Mountain is. And there's a whole backstory behind that. But the problem is it just would put people at the end of the line instead of the, yeah, exactly. So there is no real easy solution without, you know, someone bequeathing us several tens of millions of dollars in a bypass. So, but if you know somebody, send them our way. But yeah, it's definitely a tricky thing, and I live there and have to deal with that red light, and it's not great, so.
Yeah.
But thanks for everything that you do for the community.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeiffer, for your engagement and participation. Appreciate it. All right. So that wraps up the Miller Creek Leadership Team Report, and we will move on now to the North Side/West Side Team Report. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Joyce Gibbs, spelled G-I-B-B-S. And I'm a representative from the North Side/West Side Leadership Team. We have several things that are exciting to report on. We recently completed a mural on the North Side Park with funds from our, the North Side, or the Neighborhood Energizer Grant and the Neighborhood Leadership Team. And so we're thankful for the City of Missoula giving us those funds and helping us support community art. The mural was a team effort with neighbors painting the background canvas for the artist. Local artist Stella Knoll went in after that and did one of her beautiful paintings on it. We are absolutely thrilled, after we think maybe two years, that the North Side/West Side Pedestrian Bridge will be opening soon. As you know, or maybe can imagine, that is a huge way for us to get through to downtown and the rest of the city. It was very important when it was built 20 years ago, and it is still important and even more important now. So we are excited to, we're looking forward to help have a ribbon cutting in the end of July and hope that if you want to join us, we will have a party and celebrate the fact that we are no longer closed off or rerouted through, through other avenues to get to the other parts of the city. We are planning our general meeting for September, and it will be a gathering in one of the parks, most likely. And we hope to bring our neighborhood together at that meeting and hopefully change some bylaws which are in need of changing. And to speak to the different jurisdictions' issues for our travels. Our team and all of our leader, or all of our neighbors are very concerned about the developments that are happening on the North Side and the fact that there is very little infrastructure going in to create safe spaces and safe streets for the people who will be living in those large developments. Improving the safety of our streets is extremely important. And with more cars and more construction and, and more people moving in, we understand, especially on the North Side, we have the Scott Street Bridge, which is maybe owned by the state and the city, we're not sure. We have the Tunnel, which is, I understand, owned by three different jurisdictions, the state, the city, and the feds all own parts of the Tunnel. And if you've driven through there or even walked through there recently, you can tell that it is falling down. I'm not sure how long it's gonna stay. And the safe routes to school, especially near Scott Street and Phillips Street. Last month, there was a child that was hit by a car there again. And it would be wonderful to see a stoplight there. Yeah, I know it's, it's hard, and it's hard to get everyone in and everyone out at the same time. But these are our real safety concerns and, yeah, we would like to be a part of any plans, any infrastructure, to help realize some new ideas about traffic and congestion and the safety of the kids and the people who live in these neighborhoods. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs, let's, yeah, let's go see if there's any questions first, yeah. Counselor Farmer?
Yeah, thank you for coming down, I really appreciate it. The North Side/West Side Neighborhood is one of the most engaged neighborhood councils, and it's, I'm not biased, but I think it's one of the best because it is my local neighborhood. And I, I hear all your concerns, and I agree with the corner of Phillips and Scott. And we did hear last week about plans for a roundabout there. So there is gonna be something coming, it's just taking a lot longer. So there will be something, but I agree, on the North Side, there's a lot of infrastructure needs still that we're gonna need to make that a safer place for all the development. And I will be at the party for the ribbon cutting of the pedestrian bridge because that is in dire need as well, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your comments. Other comments from Counselors online? Counselor Basara, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to pass along some additional information, and I too think that North Side/West Side is one of the best neighborhoods. And I appreciate your concerns. In fact, I used to live right across the street from Lowell School, and so I'm familiar with the issues that, safety issues that affect that area. I, I think we're gonna, I have been talking to Public Works and Mobility Department to coordinate some meetings that include the school also and see how together we can come up with a plan for increased safety beyond the, the roundabout at Phillips and Scott. So just wanted to let you know, and I'll, I'd be happy to reach out to the leadership team with more information and see where we can go from there for increased coordination with the, with the school and the neighborhood. Excellent.
Excellent, thank you, Counselor Basara. And I just wanted to echo that also, Ms. Gibbs, from the staff and the administration, that the infrastructure needs and the complications of a hemmed-in neighborhood. Missoula Valley has some very interesting topographical and geographical realities that as we grow, it's gonna take ever more thoughtful planning and consideration. You, I believe, may be attended, but if not, we had that event at the Old Burn Street Commons. And we should, you know, through board representatives, talk about doing more of those public outreach opportunities so members of the public have the opportunity to engage with folks that are actually deploying these infrastructure investments and have the opportunity to ask questions. We use Engage Missoula for that as well, and I always want to make sure people know that. It's a good way to connect right with the project planners and things like that as well. But we want to make sure people are getting the information they need to understand when some of these infrastructure investments will actually start construction and what to expect. Because, of course, those cause their own set of challenges once we have to close certain routes for re-traffic and things like that. And sometimes it's good to have other eyes on it. So thank you very much, appreciate your engagement and participation. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. That wraps up our Neighborhood Council updates for the evening. And I'm gonna go ahead and read our proclamation, which is the Wildfire Smoke Ready Week. And normally, I actually have these not on screen, so bear with me. Whereas wildfire smoke is a serious and growing public health threat, and the more scientists learn about the dangers of smoke exposure, the more we need to act. Wildfire smoke can readily come indoors, creating unhealthy conditions both outside and inside. And whereas wildfire smoke causes worsened asthma attacks, decreased lung function, worsened COPD symptoms, increased susceptibility to infectious disease, increased risk of heart attack and stroke, negative impacts on cognition, and increased hospitalizations and deaths. And whereas the National Interagency Fire Center Outlook identifies significant wildfire potential in portions of the Western United States in 2024, including regions that send smoke to our area. And whereas our adopted climate-ready Missoula plan finds that our summers and early fall are becoming hotter and drier, wildfire season is getting longer. Wildfire smoke is an increasing risk, and we need to enact strategies to reduce harm. And whereas Missoula Public Health and Climate Smart Missoula have resources to help residents understand and decrease exposure to the health risks associated with wildfire smoke. And whereas public messaging and outreach focused on the dangers of wildfire smoke and how individuals can protect themselves play an important role in individual preparedness during wildfire season. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, Missoula County and the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim July 8th through 14th, 2024, as Wildfire Smoke Ready Week to inform and educate Missoula County and citizen, and city residents of the hazards that wildfire smoke presents and how to mitigate against these hazards. Thank you very much. All right. And thank you, everyone, for being safe out there and safely recreating to reduce the risk of wildfire. All right. So that brings us now to our public hearings. The first is, first of which is 5.1. It is the Public Forum for Missoula City/County Animal Control Center. And I believe that Kristen Spatafor is here to present.
Yes, thank you so much for having me, and I'm going to share my screen. Let me know if you can see it.
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet, okay. Oh, sorry.
No worries.
There we go.
There it is.
Alrighty. Well, good evening, my name is Kristen Spatafor, Associate Planner for the City of Missoula Development Services Division. Development Services have, has received notice from Oz Architects on behalf of the Missoula City/County Animal Control Center of their intent to expand and remodel their existing animal control center located at 6700 Butler Creek Road in Missoula. The parcel is owned by the Missoula County Airport Industrial District. They are a government agency, and City Council is authorized to hold a public hearing when an agency proposes to develop or use public land contrary to Title 20 zoning regulations. In this case, the animal control center is currently a legal non-conforming use, so any expansion would not be permitted in the zoning district. The proposed expansion is located in the northwest part of the city, east on Butler Creek Road, just south of Interstate 90. The proposed project includes a 4,300-square-foot addition of office and kennel facility space, remodeling of the existing facility, and addition of a fire suppression system to the entire building. The animal control center is zoned M12 limited industrial and is within the Missoula Development Park Overlay District. Parcels located to the south, east, and west of the property are zoned limited industrial, limited industrial residential, county rural residential, small agriculture, and county industrial center light, respectively. Animal control centers are not a permitted use in the Missoula Development Park Overlay. Here's a map of the Missoula Development Park Overlay District. This district has additional zoning requirements from the base zoning district, such as 25% maximum lot building coverage, 40-foot front yard setbacks, and 20-foot rear, rear and side setbacks. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 Our Missoula City Growth Policy. Per the growth policy, the animal control center's land use designation is industrial light. This area's designation is for manufacturing and related uses like distribution, research and development, assembly, storage, et cetera. Surrounding properties south of I-90 also have an industrial light land use designation. North of I-90 parcels have a residential low-density land use designation. Most of the land surrounding this parcel is vacant, industrial, and low-density residential. There are residential detached houses, a school, and a utility services lot adjacent to the animal control center. The zoning and use of the animal control center parcel is compatible with the land use designation outlined in the growth policy. According to Title 20, Section 208595 and state law, government agencies may propose to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations. Whenever an agency proposes to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations, a public hearing like this one must be held to allow for comment on the proposed use, and the agency shall attend the public hearing. City Council does not have the power to deny or condition their request. The applicant may then move forward with the proposal following the public forum. However, they can consider any public comment received. At the time of this meeting, we have received one public comment in support of the project. Title 20 defines agency as a board, bureau, commission, department, and authority or other entity of state or local government. And Missoula County Airport Industrial District is considered a county government agency and are permitted to vary from zoning through the public forum process. Here are some images of existing conditions of the facility from Butler Creek Road, from the driveway entrance to the lot from Butler Creek Road, and an overhead view. Here is the site plan of the proposed development. The light blue is the building expansion. The dark blue are overhangs, and additional fencing will go to the south and middle of the lot, here and down here. Uh, let's see, sorry. The building will be expanded slightly to the front, but most of the expansion will be to the south, as identified by the blue areas. The proposed 4,300-square-foot expansion will more than double the existing building square footage. However, the addition is compact when looking at the full site and is compatible with the existing building form and footprint. The proposal also includes adding three to four more parking spaces. And I have one more drawing here of the, that shows more detail of the floor plan. So the gray area is existing, and then the yellow is the proposed. And this is all existing parking here, and this will be the additional parking on the end. The proposed development will not comply with five requirements of the zoning code. The Missoula Development Park Overlay restricts uses beyond what would normally be permitted in the M12 limited industrial district. In the overlay, the M12 zoning district only allows for business support service, office, research service, and retail sales in the commercial group use. Animal services, shelter boarding is not permitted. The applicant will be increasing the building footprint to an existing non-conforming use facility. Per the landscaping requirements in Title 20, buffers are required when non-residential development occurs on parcels that abut our zoning districts or residential uses and are triggered when existing non-residential uses or buildings are expanded by more than 10% of their existing gross floor area. There is currently an existing grassy hill along the southern property line of the site, which will help mitigate possible adverse effects. However, the buffer requirement will not be met on this site. The MDP overlay has additional landscaping requirements that will not be met. The overlay states boulevard landscaping consisting of trees, grass and trees shall be provided along streets. Due to the existing trees and lawn adjacent to Butler Creek Road, the requirement to implement additional trees adjacent to Butler Creek Road has not been provided. Though they are varying from the zoning requirement, this is still subject to approval from Parks and Recreation. The overlay states a maximum of 20% of the front yard can be natural grasses, but 69% of the front yard will be natural grasses. And lastly, fences. Except for security or screening use, fences shall not exceed five feet in height. Two fenced areas will be installed on the site. The first is approximately seven feet, a seven-foot-tall dog run that will be relocated due to the addition. This is located to the east of the building and abuts the rear and side yards. The second fence is installed as a holding pen dog run for larger animals that are being temporarily cared for. This fence is also seven feet tall and is located central to the building as a whole and faces a side and rear yard. Both fences will be chain-linked and seven feet tall or less. Neither fence will have a screen with slats as visibility is vital to the safety and security of the animals being cared for. The staff does not have a recommended motion as no action is required. The staff does not have a recommended motion, as no action is required. So thank you for your time. City staff are available for questions after a quick presentation from the applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Spatafor. Appreciate that. And we have Shannon Terryo from Missoula Public Health. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Shannon Terryo. I'm the Director of Environmental Health, and in Missoula, animal control is part of the Environmental Health Department. So that's why I'm here. First, I want to talk just a little bit to give context, especially to any public that are here or watching, to understand why we're doing the project. It'll be short. But we started this planning in about 2019, really because we recognized that we did not have enough room for staff and that we were often near or at capacity. This is the small room that all five officers, a licensing specialist, work around. That's our table, that's our break table, and the only meeting space that we have on the property. And as you can see, in this instance, and which is often the case, there are animal cages on the table and in other spaces, because we just don't have enough room. Secondly, the, let's see if I, uh-huh, okay, went too far. Have to be patient. Okay. I'm not doing this right. I'm just gonna talk and just not do those pictures. Okay. So the second part is that our lobby is very small. The public areas are really not sufficient to meet the needs of a growing community. Besides being used for overflow and small animals, again, I went through very quickly, but what you would have seen was a lot of cages where we didn't plan ever to have cages and kennels. We have, sometimes we have cats there, or often have cats and kittens there, sometimes we have rabbits. Right now, we have a couple of parakeets, if anybody wants to adopt a parakeet. We have some parakeets for adoption. And there's really not much waiting area. In fact, when Holly came in, she told me that there were seven people in the lobby, and that is, I mean, that, it's full. The lobby is completely full with seven people in it. That is crazy. And if you can imagine, to also have animals there, and animals that might be reactive to the small animals that are, that are being housed there. In winter, that area also serves as the only place where people can really meet animals that they might want to adopt, or have their dog meet a new possible dog. So it's just a really small space, and we need more room for the public there as well. And then the other one that I went through, oh, no, okay, this is right. So our kennels, the other picture showed that we had kennels in a lot of areas. The, the picture at the top there, that's a hallway, not meant to house animals, but we often have to have animals there. It's loud, there, there are cats there. It's loud because the dog, you can see the little dog picture there, they are barking. And then they walk through there in order to get to, we walk our dogs through there in order to get to the outside kennels for the dogs. So it's not a great place, it's kind of a stressful place for cats. Also, the industry standard, so we worked with the Shelter Vet Medicine of the University of Wisconsin on this remodel about what we should change. They really helped us think about the way to do this. And one of the things is that industry standard now is for animals to have double-sided housing, so that they don't have to eat and sleep and drink the same area that they go potty, essentially, or that they have a place that they can retreat to if they're scared and they don't want to be in public view. Right now, we have, we have portaled our cat cages, so that the cats have more than one space, but we want to do that for our dogs as well. So all of these issues, and some of our dog kennels are actually much smaller than industry standards now would require. So all of these would be solved with our $3.5 million project? Well, and I shouldn't say all, I have to say most. So these in, this is, this is the plan. You can see here at the bottom that we will have a space right here where the animal control officers will have their own room to work in. There's a separate break room and meeting room here. And then there's a surgery area. Our surgery area right now, I mean, our surgery table doubles as our, it's on top of where we wash the dogs. Where we, so, I mean, it's just a very small space, it's very efficient at the time, but it's not what we need anymore. And then there's also some spaces where we can see that the animals are recovering. Right now, they would have to recover on the floor, because we don't have, I mean, they're in little things in the floor, but. And then the dark blue are specific for, people will have a much larger lobby than we have now. And we'll have two rooms that can be used for different things, but are primarily there for people to meet possible adoptable pets. And then the next part, I'm afraid to hit it too many times, because I may go past it. Oh, oh, okay. And then the next thing are improvements that would be made for the animals. So these are the new dog kennels that would be added, and they would have indoor-outdoor access with saloon doors, so they could go in and out during the day, which they can't do now. Now we have to take animals out to, to the outside and bring them back in. We would add a small animal room, so that rabbits and parakeets and snakes and fish and iguanas and ferrets don't have to be in the same place as the lobby and the, and the cats, they're predators. We would have flexible spaces, so larger spaces for cats. When cats get stressed out, they get sick. When they get sick, we can't get them spayed and neutered, and they stick around the shelter for a longer time. So the idea is that if you can reduce the stress for the animals, then you can move them through more quickly. I mean, we take very good care of our animals, but this is not where they need to be. They need to be in a loving home, right, with people? And so that's, that's the goal, is to get them moved out of the shelter and into loving homes. These light green are other important parts of the project. So we have a covered port to offload animals up at the top. Right now, it's done in a fenced area, but you saw on the other map that we're right up against the freeway. This will reduce stress and reduce possible escapes. And then remodel, these are our existing kennels for dogs. Remodel those kennels, so they, too, on this side have indoor-outdoor access, and on this side have two-sided kennels. Those are in light green, because right now, that would exceed our $3.5 million cap to do those two parts of the project. Which brings us to the variance stuff. So the first thing, it'll come up eventually, right? So the first, the first thing is, I don't know what to do about the fact that the animal shelter is not zoned for that area. I think that it met zoning when it was built, and then it became a city property, and now it doesn't meet the zoning anymore. I will say, light industrial, it seems like it's something that would work okay with animals being there, and we have not had problems in, in the past. So that's the first one. Like I said, I don't quite know how to address that one. But I do want to show you some pictures, so that you understand the variances to the other one. This, it must be that when we first built the shelter, you can see that we put in trees, and the trees are just on the other side of the sidewalk. So you're looking both north and south from our parking lot entryway, and you'll see that we have nice trees. The requirement is to put trees in that swale. My understanding is that swale is a stormwater swale, and so it makes sense that we have trees there already. So I like trees personally, so it's not that, but we have to find ways to, to have this project work. The second is that idea of a buffer between this residential house that you see in the top corner there, which is directly south from the animal shelter. It's right here. And this is looking from the shelter to that house. And you can see there's a big hill right there. And this is looking towards the shelter from the house. If, if you could look close enough, you would see that this is the roof of the animal shelter. So again, while we're not putting bushes and trees up there right now, if we, if we had the money to put in more bushes and trees, I would want to do it in places that would serve the animals and help provide shade for the animals instead of right there. So that's the other one. And then the last one is the kennel fence height. This is a picture of our existing yard that we have for people to meet their animals in the summertime, and to exercise the animals and have the animals play. It's our animal play yard. It's a seven-foot fence, because some animals are amazing. Some dogs are amazing at getting out. And so the other one is really interior to the building, bigger footprint that you would see from the freeway. And then, of course, we have chain-linked kennels, too, and those kennels are seven feet tall, so. Those are the changes. I think we are being very reasonable. It's, you know, I definitely believe that we, as a government agency, need to meet what we can. It's like, I believe in the zoning requirements and landscaping requirements. And at the same time, we're trying to make a project work and be realistic and with the public's money, both tax money and donations. So that's, thanks.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Terryo. Appreciate that. And we'll, I don't believe anybody else is here from Health Department or anything else to speak to before I move on to questions?
I think other people are here, so we have our architect, the people, some people from facilities, and also our animal control manager, but that's the only presentation.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks for being here, everybody, and there may be a question that comes your way. So I'll go ahead and turn this over to questions from council. Are there any questions from council members? Counselor Henderson?
Thanks so much. Given that this is not, this might be a question for Mr. Nugent in land use and planning, we can't do anything with the variances as requested?
Nope, this is just a public hearing where we get to hear about it and do nothing.
Got it.
Per state law.
Per state law. I appreciate you pointing that out. It's not just, we're not.
Yeah, and that's not just some random Missoula thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, great. So I'm just curious in terms of the timeline for this facility and kind of what's the plan for the animals while the, I mean, construction is happening?
I am so glad that you asked. So as soon as we get a thumbs up from the city council on the future funding requests, so being able to pay the bonds into the future, we'll be able to start. We are literally ready to start building. And so that is the final piece before we start building. And then we've worked, we have a pre-construction manager, Jackson Construction, have worked very closely. We've talked about how, we talked about phasing it initially, but we can save a lot of money by doing a lot of it all at once. And so we're gonna have a, we will have a work trailer that's brought to the site, so we can have most of the office space just free for them to do things. And then we've also talked about getting as many animals into foster and out of the shelter as possible. In fact, we have a clear the shelter promotion going on with.
It's gonna start maybe with the empty the shelter promotion.
Come on up. You have to come up here, I'm sorry. It's an empty the shelter promotion that'll start.
And please introduce your name.
I'm Holly Hargrove, H-A-R-G-R-O-V-E. I'm the animal control manager. So we're looking to do some promotions to get as many animals adopted as we possibly can. So there, it reduces the number in the shelter, it cuts down on their stress while in their shelter, and we've got construction going on and also trying to utilize foster homes. So if anybody would like to foster, let me know.
Great. I may have a follow-up.
Sure.
Yes. I guess for Ms. Terryo. The question, you had said ideally there would be expansion if there was additional funding. With the way that you're building this now, is it going to be easier to incrementally add if, you know, a donation of substantial portions were to come along, that you'd be able to, like, you know, build it in a way that a major remodel would not be necessary to expand?
Yes, thank you. So the parts that we put into alternates are ones that could be added as, as we go. And so they're not part, we will build the, all the new areas, but it's remodeling the existing kennels, and then having a separate covered, the portico, or, no, separate covered garage, basically, to offload the animals. So yes, if donations come in and can cover that during the process, we'll be able to add that to the current project.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Good questions, thank you very much. I did meet somebody last night that loves birds, so I'm gonna make sure they know about the two parakeets. Any other questions from council? Counselor Basika online. And for the record, Connor, just to note that Counselor Eric Nelson has joined us.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that my family was really hesitant about adopting a shelter animal, and we adopted Leila, an Aussie mix, in January. She was nine months old, and she is fabulous for the family. So I just wanted to let folks know if they're hesitant about adopting a shelter animal. It ended up being a great addition to our family for us. So I would suggest opening up your minds if you need a new addition to your family.
Thank you, Counselor Basika. Absolutely. We'll make sure we get the word out about the adoption events. Any other questions from council? No, not seeing any here in the room or online. All right, then, we do not have a motion to make, but it is a public hearing. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to come on up and provide comment. Just as a reminder, we allow three minutes or less for public comment. Mike is on. I will help you by starting the timer up here. There's a little color-coded timer to give you warning when you're getting close to three minutes. Please just say your name and spell your last name for the record. Come on up. Who has ever ready? All right, not seeing any in the room for this item. Is there any public comment for this agenda item? Online. All right. Not seeing any. It looks like your presentation was thorough enough that nobody has any questions. Thank you very much. Thanks for your good work on this. Appreciate it. All right. That wraps up that agenda item, and so we'll go ahead and move on to item 5.2, which is a public forum for Opportunity Place. So very similar. This is where city council does not have a decision-making role. We'll hear a staff presentation from Ann Geiger, and then we'll hear from the developer as well. Opportunity for council to ask questions, and then public comments. So, Ms. Geiger, whenever you're ready.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ann Geiger, and I'm the Strategic Initiatives Manager within the Department of Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. So I work with our climate team and our housing policy specialist. Thank you so much for hosting this public forum for Opportunity Place's Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Application to the Montana Board of Housing. The developers of this project are applying for a 9% tax credit to support the development of Opportunity Place, an affordable, multifamily rental housing complex planned for 901 South Third Street West in Missoula. The developers are here tonight, and we'll talk about the details of the project. This public forum is a chance for us all to hear feedback from Missoulians about Opportunity Place and its value for our community. The public forum also satisfies the State of Montana's public forum requirement for tax credit applications. So Missoula's housing strategy that was adopted in 2019, called A Place to Call Home, highlighted the need for the city to support projects seeking 9% tax credits. Tax credits are an important funding resource and can be really competitive, given our state's population, which limits the total share of tax credits that we can access. In terms of supporting the Opportunity Place development, the spring city council members also signed a letter of support for the project. And in addition, Councilmember Jones and I attended a Board of Housing meeting in May to express the city's support. The project before you is not requesting funding from the city, rather, this public forum is a requirement of the process. So no motion is included as part of the public forum, and no action is needed by council at this time, as Mayor Davis said. So now, please welcome Josh Kendrick, the CEO of Opportunity Resources, and the project developer, Mike Boucher, and I'm gonna share the slides.
Great, thank you, Ms. Geiger. Welcome, Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Boucher.
Good evening. Wait just a second for the slides.
No problem, take your time.
Well, thank you very much for hearing our presentation this evening. Opportunity Resources, I'm just gonna kind of do a quick history. Opportunity Resources, I'm just going to kind of do a quick history of Opportunity and how we got to the point where we're in front of you talking about doing housing and affordable housing. So it wasn't just animal control. There we go. You can go to the next one. So Opportunity Resources was founded in 1955. We're almost 75 years old. Opportunity Resources was founded by a group of parents. And that group of parents, at the time, if you had a child with a disability, you were told to send your child to the state institution. So that meant if you had a child with a disability, the doctor probably told you to send your kid off to Boulder at the time. That group of parents got together, and those founders knew they could do better. And doing better is something Opportunity has done since that time in 1975. They've always been an organization that's looked to do better, to do different things. That group of seven parents hired a teacher at the time. They hired that teacher, and they rented a room across the street from where we are right now on Russell, over in the fairgrounds. So we've always kind of been in that same little neighborhood. It's kind of neat. They hired that teacher, and the teacher took those students in instead of sending them to Boulder. From there, the school program started. And when kids were allowed into the schools, that same group of parents got together again and said, "Well, we can do better. Our kids have nothing to do at this point." So they founded Opportunity Resources. Opportunity Resources has grown since then a lot. Since then, we've grown to where we employ almost 300 employees in Missoula across in Missoula. We also have grown to where we have employment programs. Our employment programs employ adults with disabilities throughout Missoula. We have people... We support people in over 100 businesses across Missoula. We clean a whole bunch of city facilities and want to keep cleaning city facilities. So hopefully, I'll be back here when you move into the new facility that we'll get to clean that still, because we did it for the feds forever. So quick little plug there. We know what we're doing. We've been there. But our employment programs work to support adults across the community. We have adults with disabilities working in over 100 businesses across Missoula. So our goal really is in employment in everything we do to have our individuals with disabilities just integrated, just another employee, just another person in that service. Residential services is something we've done since the early '80s. In the '80s, we combined with Big Bear Resources. Until the '80s, we had no residential services. In the '80s, when we combined with Big Bear Resources, we developed and we grew up group homes and apartment complexes. Group homes and apartment complexes are something we have, something we're not going to continue to open, because our biggest residential programs are, again, just in the community. We have individuals living in pretty much every apartment complex across town. And our goal, again, is they live there, you don't even know that opportunity's involved, somebody's living there. We may support somebody an hour a week that's living there. We may support somebody that's living there for 24 hours a day. So we're really trying to be everywhere in the community, but really, you don't notice that we're even there. Right now, in our main facility, we have... On Russell Street, we have our Choices Program. So individuals come to a day program. We also have Artists of Opportunity, and part of this project is going to allow us to grow our Artists of Opportunity program and really build a building, build a program that's going to be a national model. We're going to move our art program from the Russell Street facility to the Third Street facility. We're going to have art galleries, space there for our clients. We're going to have gallery space for rent. We've talked to the schools. We're going to do classes with the schools. We're going to really do a model art program there. Another program we have is our Special Services Division. We've done lots of firsts at Opportunity Resources. Our employabilities of all that employment, we are the first employabilities program in the state. We are the first program in the state to run special services. We serve the needs of adults with disabilities who have sex-affending behaviors. Before we started the program, they were often sent to Boulder or to Deer Lodge, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We wrap around services to 24-hour services. So something we've always done is have a vision for the future and try to do cutting-edge new things. That brings us to this program. We have our woodshop facility right now. Woodshop is... Wood Products Industry is something you've all heard about, seen about. We haven't made any money at our woodshop. I look like a really bad businessperson since Stone Container closed. Our woodshop is something we have slowly faded away since that time. When we lost those stone contracts, we've lost money as a business. It fits our nonprofit, fits our mission really well, but doesn't our business. We're down to 12 adults with disabilities that are working in that facility now, and we've teamed up with Tripp Lumber. And Tripp Lumber is now running that whole operation. We've kind of handed the operation over to them, sold it, our customers to them. They're running that operation, so none of our individuals are losing their jobs in anything we're doing, which has all been very important to us through this whole thing. But we got to the place where we saw that we had that piece of land, and I was losing staff. We were losing staff continually to Spokane, to small towns, because they were losing... They couldn't afford their rents. I have so many staff that live together. I have staff that live with family. So it got us to thinking, what can we do to be a part of the solution to the housing issue in Missoula? We looked at our piece of property. We got ahold of a developer that knows low-income tax credits, and we contacted him and wanted to do, hopefully, our next big visionary thing. I will let Mike step up and talk from there.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Welcome, Mr. Boucher.
Thank you very much. My name is Mike Boucher, B-O-U-C-H-E-E. And as Josh said, I'm a local affordable housing developer with Boucher Development. And I want to thank Ann, first of all, for helping us with this presentation. This is wonderful. And I want to thank all of you for providing us this venue and this opportunity to talk about this project. We've been working on this one for a few years now, actually, even though we are still in the pre-development stage. When Josh and the board approached my partner in this project, Jen Clary with Encompass Design, about serving as developers on this project, it was an absolute no-brainer for us. We just think so much of Opportunity Resources. We think it is a gold standard nonprofit here in Missoula and in Montana. And we thought their vision was really incredible for Missoula, that they were going to step outside the box and really try and do something impactful, not just for their organization, for their staff, for their clients, but for the entire Missoula community. And so we wanted to do everything that we could to support that. And what we've come up with is really what I think is a pretty neat vision for this property and one that has a lot of good feels. And if I could just take a little bit to kind of walk through the different aspects of this project, I would love to do that. So as Josh said, we've been working with Tripp Lumber as a purchaser for the woodshop business, because the very first thing that we decided when we started working on this project was that we wanted to somehow save the existing business and save the staff and client jobs at the woodshop. We do so much in Missoula for economic development. We thought economic preservation was something that we had to do. And so we've spent a lot of time finding the right fit for the purchaser of that business. We think we have now found that partner, and so we are preserving that business, which feels really good. And we're going to be moving that to a more appropriate industrial location on the north side, which will then allow us to clear the existing site at 901 South Third Street West across from the Missoula International School, clear it of its existing improvements, which are a few metal buildings that house the woodshop business, and prepare it for redevelopment. So we've got... We're preserving the business, and once we get the site cleared, our plan is to build on the map here, we're building a 24-unit affordable housing complex, as well as we'll have a green space, a quasi-public green space that will be accessible to folks in the neighborhood. And we'll have a new 2,000, approximately 2,000-square-foot commercial building that will front Third Street. It's going to be an absolutely beautiful building. And the intention of that building is to house the Artists of Opportunity program, which a lot of you may have seen their calendars, seen their artwork around town. It's just another example of Opportunity Resources being at the forefront and being an innovator in their industry with this art program. And so it's had gallery space downtown. Some of you may have been to a First Friday show, and we are finding a new permanent home for that Artists of Opportunity program. So we've got economic preservation and economic development. We're going to have a new business and a new commercial center there on Third Street. And the thing that brings us all here tonight, of course, is a public hearing that is required by the Montana Board of Housing in order for Josh and Jen and I to submit our 9% tax credit application, which is due August 5th. And so I'm here tonight to talk to you all and to take any questions. But I will say that this is probably the fourth or fifth public meeting, public hearing that we've had over the last couple of years. We've really tried to get out in front and be good partners and inform all of the stakeholders to this project, whether that be the city, the county, the state, the neighborhood, potential residents and tenants, anyone that may be impacted by this project. We've always tried to just really get out there and talk about it as much as we can and answer questions. So I thank you all for this opportunity to do this again. With that said, the new apartment complex that we are hoping to build if we are allocated tax credits by the state of Montana, it will be 24 units in a new three-story building that will run between Third and Fourth Street along Ash. There will be nine one-bedroom, one-bath units. Those will be 828 square feet, so a nice-sized one-bedroom unit. And we will also have 15 two-bedroom units, which will be about 1,120 square feet. Those will be two-bed, two-bath. They will be very comfortable, very well-appointed units for tenants. Now, the thing that maybe sets this project apart from a standard tax credit project or other apartments in Missoula is that... And this is really going with Opportunity Resources' vision for the community and trying to address what we saw as a glaring need in the community, and that is housing for some of Missoula's most vulnerable residents. And those are disabled adults, whether they be clients of Opportunity Resources or simply Missoula citizens that are not associated with Opportunity Resources. And so we are building eight of the 24 units as fully-accessible units. The project architect, Jen Clary, has a deep experience in this arena, and she's designed some fantastic units with great forethought as to how best to make them efficient and highly usable for tenants that are often in large wheelchairs and have other special needs that we've tried our best to address with these units. So we're really excited about that. All of the other 16 units are adaptable and nearly fully accessible, which I don't think you would see in many, if any, other projects as well. So we're awfully excited about that. The building envelope is going to exceed the energy code, and we do that to try and make the building as efficient as possible so that we can help tenants with their heating and cooling bills. The tenants will pay for all utilities except water, sewer, and trash. The owners will pay for that. So we wanted to make sure that we were making these as energy-efficient and sustainable units as possible for the tenants. And the design, I guess... If you can see that on the screen there, there's a... Yep, there's the gallery space fronting Third Street there, a two-story gallery building with lots of windows and natural light, and then the three-story apartment complex behind. The way that Jen designed it, it's a front-door, back-door, garden-style walk-up building. And everyone, all 24 units, will have a private deck or a private patio. And we've laid the site plan out such that the courtyard is south and west-facing to help capture sunlight in the units and really make this a pleasant, enjoyable place to live for the tenants. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I think in terms of the good feels, we've got housing development, economic development, economic preservation, repositioning of a really, just a fantastic site that is near downtown, near the Good Food Store, near the walking trail, on bus routes, so great public transportation available. And so we're really excited, and we hope that the Board of Housing provides us this opportunity. But all along the way, the city of Missoula, across every department, and all of you sitting here have been incredibly supportive of this vision and what we've tried to do. So I want to thank you all for your support, for your written letter to the Board of Housing. It was incredibly impactful. So thank you all. And we've got a lot of work to do, but we've got it all lined up, and we just want to be given the chance to create this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Great project. Appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Counselor Sherrill?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say that this is a great project. I'm really excited about it. I'm excited about the work that Opportunity Resources has done. If ever anyone has a chance to really learn more about them and go toward their current facility and hear what they do, I think that they would understand what a big benefit this organization is to our community. And I'm just excited that they're taking this next step and we'll have more affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others? Counselor Campbell, and then Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I second everything that Counselorwoman Sherrill had to say about this project. I certainly hope we do everything we can to redouble efforts, make sure that this litig loan comes through for this project, because it looks tremendous. Just a shout-out to Josh here for his work at ORI for a quite a number of years and his management there. As he knows, my late life had an opportunity to work there for quite a number of years in a couple group homes on Benson Street and Dickens. And then my father was manager there for quite a number of years, working in employment for those folks over there. So it was a great, great opportunity for them, and it allowed me to get to know your organization a lot better, and you're doing great stuff up there. So I just keep up the great work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Jones?
I'm not going to say anything terribly new, but yes, I'm super supportive, and the amount of thought that has gone into this project is just incredibly notable. And you guys are clearly very passionate about Missoula. Opportunity Resources has always been a wonderful institution in Missoula, and I think the fact that you are looking towards the future and figuring out how to adapt to a rapidly-changing world to keep going forward is just... Thank you. Thank you for that and all the energy you've put into it. And it's a great project, so fingers crossed onto the next level.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other comments or questions from council? I'm not seeing any online. I just want to echo the comments that have been made here tonight. Congratulations on a fantastic project and fingers crossed. We have your back 100%, and this would be an incredible asset for the community. The continued work of Opportunity Resources is obviously very important for the vibrancy of our community. I have some beautiful art on my wall at home, as well as some fabulous tea mugs. So really looking forward to seeing what the art gallery will display. And do let us know if there's anything we can do to continue support at the state level. Thank you, Counselor Jones, for attending that Montana Board of Housing meeting. To extend the support from the city, that means a lot to the Board of Housing, knowing that elected officials are there to support and knowing projects like this meet our housing strategy and policies. So it means a lot. Thank you for your good work, and fingers crossed.
That means a lot. We can't thank you enough.
You bet. Absolutely. All right. I think that wraps up our presentation this evening, and so we'll see you for the groundbreaking.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Oh my gosh, yes. Hey, wait a minute, you can't go anywhere. Sorry. Foo bar, foo bar on my part. We need to take public comment. This is a public hearing. Sorry, even though we have no decision-making space here this evening, we have to take public comment. Thank you so much. Appreciate you catching me there. All right, is there any public comment this evening on this agenda item? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right, not seeing any online. Hopefully we didn't lose anybody in that moment. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. All right. That wraps up item 5.2. We will move on to Agenda Item 5.3, which is the Code Amendments: Response to Spike in Youth Cannabis Use. And I am going to have Counselor Jones tee this up as far as the presentation, and we do have several others here from the Health Department. We have medical experts, and we have our own chief of police here to speak to this agenda item this evening. So Counselor Jones, let's start us off.
Thank you. I will just introduce this, and then we've got a presentation from the Health Department staff and some medical experts from our Missoula medical community, and then police chiefs. So I'll just introduce it, basically. We have heard this a couple times already, so we'll, but we're going to be holistically going over it again tonight because this is the final public hearing. So this is, the issue or the topic is youth cannabis. And basically, ever since recreational cannabis was introduced to Missoula in January of 2022, for the period of years, kind of leading up to that with medical cannabis, and then as well as then the overlay of recreational cannabis, the Health Department was tracking the statistics coming in, and we've seen a big impact on folks under the age of 21 in Missoula who are using this product. They're not supposed to be. It's supposed to be only for adults aged 21 and over, but we are seeing a big impact on our youth population. So they're going to talk about that. I won't go further into it, but we've got a lot of information now showing this issue, showing the impact, and some recommendations from the Health Department. So what I'd like to do is just introduce it at that level, have the presentation, and then maybe after the presentation, Mayor Davis, I could just speak to the ordinances specifically as the action items then. Is that okay?
That sounds great. Yeah, thank you for introducing this.
Keep it linear so that we can follow it. Thanks. So I know we've got Health Department folks and some other folks, and we'll start with Health Department, if that's okay.
I am with the Health Department, Missoula Public Health. I am a Substance Use Disorder Prevention Coordinator. I think you'll need to make me a, so that I can share my screen. And then also, we'll need to have Faith Price. She's online today, and she'll need to be able to speak as well.
All right. So I think Connor in the bank room, if you could make Leah Fitch Brody presenter so she can share her screen. That would be very helpful.
Yep, she has been made a presenter.
I think we heard confirmation that you can present, Ms. Fitch Brody. There we go. Great.
And then, my name is Jaclyn Kline, last name K-L-I-N-E. I'm also a Substance Use Disorder Prevention Coordinator with Missoula Public Health. Faith, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thanks for unmuting me. My name's Faith Price. I am a research associate at the Johns Hopkins University Center for Indigenous Health. I am also part of the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition. I'm the Policy and Law Committee Chair. I have my PhD in prevention science and have become interested in marijuana as part of my PhD is in, the emphasis is in substance use prevention. So became interested in that as our, it's becoming more of a substance of choice for our youth. So thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here. All right, take it away.
Great. So yes, we are here today, so we have two people from the Missoula Public Health, and then all of us are involved in a coalition called Healthy Missoula Youth. I do apologize, I am wearing a mask today. I'm getting over a cold. So we are a coalition of, that represents several people in our community. Oh dear, it went all the way to the end for some reason. Okay, there we go. So we have some really great organizations here in Missoula that are a part of this. We focus primarily on preventing youth substance use, as well as trying to prevent harms related to early substance use. And so we have three different committees, one of which it focuses on policy and law, really thinking about how can we create an environment where youth are less likely to use potentially harmful substances. And I'm going to let Jaclyn take over the next.
So we're just going to go ahead and dive on into the data here. This first one that you're seeing up on the screen comes from the Montana Prevention Needs Assessment. This is a survey that's done in eighth, 10th, and 12th grade across the state of Montana. You can see the state data is marked on this chart by a red line. Our county data for Missoula is in green, and this is 2022 in green. And then in blue is 2020 data. Now, this chart specifically is looking at substance use, what's considered regular substance use by youth. It is self-reported, and this is youth reporting on past 30-day use. In the red circle there, you see marijuana. Now, youth use of cannabis in Missoula is significantly higher than what we're seeing at the state level in the red line, but that black diamond on there is what we're seeing on a national level. So over the past couple of years, substance use as a whole has decreased, but this cannot be said for cannabis. Cannabis use for youth is actually increasing, and in Montana, it is the second highest substance of use by youth. This second graph that you guys are seeing on your screens now is the perception of harm. So this is looking at, do kids think that the use of a substance, in this case, we're looking at marijuana in particular, is it going to be harmful to them, either physically, mentally, or in other ways? Now, what you can see here in the red circle is what youth perception of harm is in regards to cannabis. It is significantly lower. We want these numbers to be high, meaning they believe it is going to harm them, because actually that is the case. Again, in the green here, we're seeing our county data for 2022. In the blue is county for 2020, and that red line is a state level for 2022. So not only is perception of harm for our community decreasing on a county level, but we are significantly lower than the state level as a whole. And it is significantly lower than other priority substances as well. Part of the reason why this is so concerning is that the perception of harm for cannabis in Missoula has never been lower, but the actual risk has likely never been higher. Part of the reason for this is because of the concentration of THC in the products that are being sold today. So the graph that you're seeing on the screen here is looking at that potency level. In the green, that's THC, the psychoactive ingredient. That is what we see in the flower. The state of Montana does have a cap on the potency of flower at 35%. However, there is no cap on the concentrates, and that's that blue line. So there's significantly stronger products, which lead to significantly stronger health The red line there is CBD, that's the non-psychoactive ingredient. Now, that is typically very, very low, less than 3%. On average, even just a decade ago, we are seeing the average concentration at 6%, 7%, and nowadays, we're seeing closer to 69% potency. This isn't the same cannabis or same marijuana that we were seeing a couple decades ago. It is significantly stronger. And those are some things that are impacting the health of our youth. So not only are we seeing those physical health concerns in terms of differences in brain function, poor memory and attention spans decrease, an increased risk of motor vehicle crashes, respiratory issues. But we're also seeing a higher likelihood of youth who begin using cannabis at a young age in developing a cannabis use disorder. They're four to seven times more likely to develop that cannabis use disorder if they initiate use before the age of 18. For youth in the state of Montana, according to the 2019 Montana DPHHS Medicaid Claim Treatment Data, over half of our youth who are seeking treatment for substance use disorder are primarily seeking it for cannabis-related issues. In terms of mental health, we're seeing a decline in IQ, an increase in anxiety and depression rates. We're seeing an increase in suicidal ideation and self-harm, psychosis, schizophrenia is associated with this as well. We're also seeing an increase in our visits to hospitals and emergency departments. So I'll let Leah go ahead and talk about that.
Yeah, so I'm going to briefly go over the data here, but I know we do have some representation from our medical community. So just to kind of go over what we've seen in the last few years in terms of youth hospitalizations and emergency department encounters. And this slide specifically is around cannabis-related disorders, and cannabis-related disorders is what is listed under here. So that could be use-abuse dependence, that could be intoxication. It could also be cannabis-induced psychosis, which is something that is associated with use of high potency THC over a long period of time, and is especially affecting our young people. It can also include anxiety disorder and withdrawal related to cannabis. So in general, I know it's a little bit hard to read all of this, but in general, since 2016, hospitalizations and emergency department visits for ages, for youth ages 0 to 14 has gone up 142%. For those ages 15 to 19, it's gone up 15%, and for those ages 20 to 24, it's gone up 23%. But absolutely seeing a marked rise for those ages 0 to 14. And then I also wanted to take a look at hospitalizations and emergency department visits due to cannabis poisonings. And this is something that we are looking at because they have seen this in other states, for instance, in Colorado. And they saw an increase in, especially our younger population, being, entering the emergency department. That can be due to, you know, like using too much cannabis. They could have gotten into something that they thought was candy and wasn't, in fact, candy. So we have seen an increase for our 0 to 17-year-olds. Hospitalizations have gone up 200% since 2016. Another concern that we have is just seeing the increase in our number of dispensaries within Missoula County and in the city of Missoula. So starting in August of 2021, we counted there were 42 dispensaries in the city of Missoula, 45 including in the county at that time. And then we have since then grown to 51 dispensaries being in the city of Missoula and 56, including the county. And this is something that we're concerned about because we had heard that, oh no, we're going to have attrition, that we're going to have fewer dispensaries, kind of as this goes along, and we are not seeing that. We're seeing an increase. Another thing that we are concerned about, the reason that we're concerned about this is that the Public Health Institute recommends that there's only one dispensary per 15,000 people, and for the city of Missoula, that would mean that we would only have about five dispensaries. And the reason they recommend this is because we know that youth who live near, within five miles of marijuana dispensaries, tend to use more marijuana. And so this is a concern, especially, I would say, we heard some representation from our different neighborhoods. If we are seeing dispensaries, especially in some of our lower-income neighborhoods, that can be a huge concern for the youth that live there. And so we're seeing a concentration in our West Side and also in our heart of Missoula, Rose Park and Franklin Fort neighborhoods. I do also want to say that currently, we do have one in 1,500 people, one dispensary per 1,500 people. And comparatively, to a very similar town in the US, Eugene, Oregon, has one per 3,500 people, and Spokane, Washington, has one per 14,000 people. And so we have quite a few dispensaries for the number of people that we have. And we had a great question from Counselor Nugent last time about, you know, what are we seeing in terms of, you know, is there a difference in what we're seeing in Missoula County versus other places that may have fewer dispensaries within their city limits? And so Billings, you may have heard, they have an ordinance where they cannot have recreational dispensaries within city limits, and, but they can have it, you know, within the county. And they have quite a few, they have, sorry, youth use of substance of cannabis is quite a bit less in Yellowstone County comparatively. So I just wanted to kind of show you those statistics. This is showing irregular use of marijuana for eighth, 10th, and 12th graders from 2020 and to 2022. And then for Yellowstone County, even though they do have recreational marijuana in their county, because it is not in like the concentrated areas where people are living, they are not seeing that stark increase. And then I'll pass it to Faith.
All right, thank you. Ms. Price, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thanks. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what we can do as a community and just let folks know that there are public health recommendations on the cannabis industry and how to regulate it, based on a lot of research that has been done on both alcohol and tobacco, and now growing amount of research on cannabis, the cannabis industry itself, from other states that have experienced and legalized cannabis for adult use prior to us. So there's a lot we can learn from our neighbors. This is, this slide is just an example of some of the policies that have been proven to reduce the chance of youth using, to reduce underage use. So things like not allowing products that are attractive to youth, or marketing that's attractive to youth, and having buffer zones between dispensaries and youth-serving facilities, limiting the number of retail outlets, which we're talking about tonight, and I'll go into a little more depth on that. Enforcing rules regarding smoking and vaping of cannabis indoors and in public places, dedicating some of the marijuana tax revenue to public health and safety, and substance use prevention and treatment, doing local compliance checks of cannabis retailers, and having enforcement authority and capacity. And then also laws and penalties that are in place for selling or providing to minors, which is also addressed tonight by one of the ordinances. And research does indicate for that, that it's most effective to target those that are providing the substance rather than the youth. So that would be the adults or retail outlets where they might be getting it from. So it ties into perhaps having compliance checks. Next slide, please. So in terms of limiting retail outlets, which is one of the ordinances that you all are voting on tonight, addresses, there are recommendations on limiting the number and the locations of cannabis retailers, and a variety of ways to do that through licensing or zoning to prevent youth use. SAMSA is one of the folks that has put out a lot of these recommendations, and that's the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, as well as Getting It Right From the Start, which is a project of the Public Health Institute in California. And so some examples of how we might limit numbers and locations of cannabis retailers could be through zoning and determining where they're allowed to be, through population-based caps on licenses, as Leah was explaining. Some, some communities do have caps. I got my graduate degree in Washington and was there when they legalized cannabis for adult use before I moved back home to Montana. And they, the state put caps in effect, and Pullman, Washington, where I was living at the time, it's another college town, about 30,000 people, they're only allowed five dispensaries. So the public health recommendation is one per 15,000 residents, and that's been attributed to tobacco research and alcohol research. That's where that number came up with. And then buffer zones are another way to address the numbers of to address the numbers of retailers. And that would could be mean, the public health recommendation for that is 1,000 feet from youth-serving facilities. And those could include not only schools, but daycares and playgrounds and recreational facilities. And then, and also 1,000 feet from other retail outlets. So there's different approaches that a community can take. And then next slide, please. And then after our last presentation here, I just wanted to provide a little bit more background on the research behind proximity or density of retail outlets. And I did a search and was able to find a number of studies on both proximity and density of retail outlets. And so the first, I found a couple of studies out of Oregon and California that talked about just having their presence in the community. So they compared communities that did not allow retail cannabis to those that did and found that they were associated with higher rates of current marijuana use, the past 30 days use, and then also more favorable beliefs towards marijuana. That was by adolescents. That was sixth, eighth, and 11th graders in Oregon and then adolescents in California. And then secondly, having them near schools has also been shown to increase odds of cannabis use and also co-use of tobacco and cannabis if there's vape shops as well. And so I found, I think, three different studies there out of California, Oregon, and one national study, but that was on more on medical marijuana. And then lastly, having dispensaries near homes is also associated with greater use. And these, I found two studies there that were related to having, the location of dispensaries near homes. And these were both around young adults. The other ones were all adolescents, middle-aged, high school. And these two were addressed young adults. And that was ages between 18 to 22 in one study and 18 to 25 in another. So a good proportion of them being underage. But they showed that living, living near a higher number of dispensaries was associated with greater numbers of days used and also having higher positive expectancies for marijuana. And then also living within, they looked at both one and two kilometers of cannabis retail outlets. And that was also associated with use and high perceived access. And I did find one study that did not show an effect on high school youth use with, and that was out of Colorado. And they were looking at whether localities that permitted recreational retail stores had an impact on high school youth use. And they just found there was no impact. But one potential explanation for that from other research, other researchers was that this was measured perhaps too soon after legalization to that impact. But that was the only one I could find in the United States that showed no impact. So the majority are showing that it does cause an impact. And tobacco and alcohol research supports that as well around their density research. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Does that conclude the Missoula public, excuse me, public health portion of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm sorry to interrupt our flow, but we record our meetings using our Teams software. We have to restart that every two hours. So we'll go ahead and make a clean cut between Missoula Public Health and the medical experts, if that's okay. So stay tuned. We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we will resume at 8:44. Thank you. 7:44. Kidding.
Thanks for coming down.
I feel like a baby wanted to do a job, hesitant.
So I got a question on cannabis. I've got a question on cannabis. Why is it so wonderfully available for wonderful populations and drug people? Maybe we need to not, maybe we need to fail patients. I fail patients. And I get prosecuted for not being careful. I fail patients, you know, I fail patients. The ignorance of this society is driving them up. But who stops advocating the ignorance of society? I told you, I fail patients. And so why am I, why am I so, you email all these wonderful people, called Public Health Services and so forth, and City Councils, and I touch them. I email federal senators. And you know, I told them.
Okay, guys, let's bring it on back. Meeting's about to start here. Yeah. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming back together. We'll call to order the meeting July 8 at 7:43. And we're going to go ahead and continue on with our presentation. And we're going to go ahead and start with the medical experts that are here this evening. And ready to present, please say your name and spell your last name, if you would, for the transcriptionist.
Good evening, counselors and audience. Everyone can hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Dr. Melody Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M. I'm a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Montana American Academy of Pediatrics chapter and have been a pediatrician for 30 years. I wish to speak in support of the ordinance and the recommendations from the council regarding the harms to our youth with cannabis use and availability. So we've learned a lot from experience in tobacco and alcohol regulation. You've heard that from the previous presenters from the Department of Public Health, that greater access to physical retail stores, and that doesn't just mean number of stores. As you heard, it means proximity to where kids play, where kids go to school, where kids live, increases the use of cannabis, use of tobacco, and use of alcohol, and increases the harms. So for decades, we've known this increased access causes harm with access to tobacco and alcohol. And now we're coming up with a new, a new item to worry about. So logic would suggest that the same is true for cannabis. In fact, studies that you've heard earlier and data collected from Missoula and around the world substantiate that logic. The systemic review published in the medical journal Lancet, and I think you were all sent that. But those articles are dense, so I went ahead and took some liberty and highlighted some pieces of it. So the yellow highlighted points point to the associations found between increased availability and increased harms of cannabis. The purple, I highlighted differently just because it's a statement that did not find an association for adolescents. But the association was not found, not because it doesn't exist, but because this, this multi-center systemic review, all of the ages of the different groups were grouped differently. So they couldn't come up with a statistically significant value in that systemic review. So not that it does not cause harm to adolescents. Just wanted to highlight that in the article. Increased cannabis retail stores by proximity and number leads to increased harms. You've heard that already, that's highlighted in that article. The article is a summary of 32 different studies. And when you looked at some of the sub-studies within those 32, it actually looks at 44 studies. So it's not small. And it's U.S., Canada, Britain, I believe, and Uruguay of all places. I don't know why that, that was there. And then multiple studies have shown the increased harms. So I want to highlight the most worrisome harms. And some of them have already been highlighted by our Department of Public Health. In 2000, the average strength of the THC or the tetrahydrocannabinol, say that three times fast, the active ingredient was 5%. And now, as you heard, it's 35%, so seven times the potency. And that's just from 2000 to now, not from when folks like I were kids to now. So very substantial difference. There are devastating and really sometimes lifelong physical and mental impacts of cannabis use. I'm highlighting only a few. Worsened lung capacity for those who smoke cannabis. That's kind of a no-brainer because we know that smoke of any sort is bad for our lungs. And we heard about wildfire smoke just earlier tonight. Increased odds of motor vehicle crashes and consequences. And it's not a small increase. It's 20 to 30% increase when cannabis is detected in a DUI. These cannabis-related DUIs have doubled in Missoula in the last seven years. Can lead to lower IQ, diminished memory and attention, increased episodes of psychosis, which are hallucinations and detachment from reality, increase in the possibility of developing schizophrenia, increase in anxiety and depression, and then increased risk of substance use disorder of cannabis or other. And then Dr. Wilson spoke on the first meeting of this, of the statement of the American Academy of Pediatrics. So I just wanted to highlight a bit, since she's not able to be here tonight. It's a short, sensible, in this pediatrician's mind, statement regarding cannabis. The recommendations that I think are most salient to the points that you're discussing and deciding on tonight are, it strongly recommends strict enforcement of rules and regulations that limit access and marketing to our youth. States, in this case, I would say our cities, since the state has not yet taken up this issue on cannabis here in Montana, regulate cannabis as closely as possible to the regulation of tobacco and alcohol. So mirror those safety regulations. The regulations should include strict penalties for those who sell marijuana or marijuana products to those under 21. Think that we recognize that that's important for alcohol and tobacco. We should recognize that that's critically important and a helpful deterrent for access for our kids. As a pediatrician and a member of both of those American Academy and Pediatric Societies, I strongly agree with these recommendations. And I'm happy to send the brief article. It's like three pages and quite straightforward. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to this critical effort to protect Missoula's youth from the harms of cannabis and the magnified risks associated with increased access due to the vast number of our physical retail stores. As a pediatrician, I concur with the AAP policy statement and strongly encourage positive votes tonight from the council. If you're voting, I didn't quite get clear whether you were voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham. And Dr. Davison, come on up.
Hello, I'm Dr. Blair Davison, D-A-V-I-S-O-N. And I'm trained as a pediatrician. I'm also trained as a psychiatrist. I'm a board-certified adult psychiatrist and a board-certified child and adolescent psychiatrist. So the harm that I see, and the argument can be made that I'm seeing this select population of children who require hospitalization, but what we know is that if you have a biological predisposition to schizophrenia or bipolar-one disorder, the use of cannabis accelerates your functional impairments from those diseases. And that, in some instances, individuals who may not have ever gone on to have any significant functional impairment from their genetic predisposition have really grave, life-altering experiences. And I've now been in practice here sufficiently long that I have stories of those individuals. Obviously, I'm not at liberty to share those with you, but this is a real happening in our community. And the explosion that we saw with inpatient hospitalizations, first with the legalization for medical medicinal purposes, which was sadly a miscommunication about what cannabis really can do. There, in terms of children's understanding that this is something that we've sanctioned as medicinal intervention, and so quite frequently, I'm hearing from children, but it's natural, and I point out that tobacco's natural, and that it's medicine, and there's really just no good evidence that it is medicine for the things that the children are using it for. In fact, quite the contrary, there's a wide body of evidence that Dr. Cunningham has discussed to some extent that cannabis accelerates problems like anxiety disorders. It can potentially, as I mentioned, accelerate bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, and other kinds of psychosis. So we are just seeing an explosion on our unit. And when I spoke with my coworkers about what they wanted me to try and communicate was just how this is very much a very real impact on children, and that I always ask children about their experiences with substance use. And I am now in the position of hearing children, you know, say, oh, I'd never touch alcohol, but think that cannabis, because of how it has entered into our community, is somehow safer. And this misunderstanding extends to parents. And so I will have parents not infrequently say, well, like, how about having my child use cannabis for anxiety? And I have to explain, well, no. The evidence points out that using cannabis for the adolescent is more likely going to cause serious harm, and the harm is irreversible. It's not that when individuals have experienced psychotic symptoms related to cannabis use, simply abstaining from cannabis isn't going to make the psychotic experience go away. Quite often, it does, but not always. And more frequent use of cannabis results in really those irreversible, functionally impairing, lifelong symptoms. So I support this ordinance. I would encourage you all to support it as a way to protect our youth who are not able to protect themselves. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Are there other medical experts here this evening that wish to present? Okay. Thank you. Chief Collier? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Davis and council members. Thank you for having me here. As a matter of record, my name is Michael Collier. I'm the police chief. So you've heard a strong statistical and medical statements about this topic, and my presentation to you here is quite different than that. It's just a matter of perspective from the police department without a lot of data. So it's kind of some real-world experience that I'd like you to hear in both arenas, both the DUI arena and just the exposure of cannabis products to our young people. So from the DUI perspective, I agree with the documents that were attached, this referral, I think they said that about a little over double of the DUI offenses in the greater Missoula area since the legalization of cannabis. And that kind of just is consistent with what we see. It's just, we just see it commonly now, and it's, like I said, I don't have the data at the top of my hands, but I think that that's right, that there's been a market increase in those DUIs. And it reminds me of a conversation I had with a prosecutor a while back where we were talking about the increased number of THC results from blood draws. And he told me, when he's reviewing toxicology reports on blood draws from DUI arrests or crashes, in addition to the impairing substance that they're suspecting, you know, methamphetamine or heroin or some prescription drug or whatnot, they almost just expect to see THC as part of the blood draw along with it, and oftentimes do. So if you have one impairing substance, that's bad enough. But if you have poly-drug use, where you're combining more than one impairing substance, it just exacerbates the problem. So thank you for the data on the DUIs, and we do agree with that. As far as just, you know, the impact on the young people in our community related to the accessibility to cannabis, I reached out to our school resource officers, and I have three replies here, two of them from SROs that are within the high schools and one from an SRO within a middle school. The first high school SRO stated that in the past four years, he has seen at least six students who were hospitalized from smoking high-concentrate THC products. He describes the potential damage to their cognitive development as playing Russian roulette, as he's reviewed a lot of the studies that these medical professionals have discussed. And his biggest recommendation and his biggest ask of the council is that they limit the number of dispensaries throughout the community, and he thinks that that would be a big help in limiting exposure to the kids in the school that he works at. The next high school SRO, when asked about the number of students in the school who use marijuana consistently, he described it as staggering and embarrassing numbers. And he says, it seems to me that it is a public health emergency. His big concern is that when you legalize a drug for adults, that it just makes it that much easier for young people throughout the community to access that, and is appreciative of any steps that the council can take. And the last SRO that I had feedback from, she works in a middle school, and she says in the last three years that she's seen an increase or had more increased reports of cannabis use in juveniles, and that she's seen youth as young as the fifth grade or about 11 years old using marijuana products. She said most of the marijuana products that kids at that age are using are in dab pens, so they're using a THC concentrate, you know, through a dab. She also points out that her big concern is the proximity of dispensaries to schools and housing, and would encourage you to take action on this. So in a broad sense, the MPD appreciates the initiative going towards this, and we support all of this action towards the ordinances. Any questions?
Great. Thank you for wrapping up the presentations, chief, and for all of the informative presentations this evening. I'd like to hand it back over to Councilor Jones to wrap up this presentation, then we can turn it over to council questions.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. This is a lot of information that we've covered tonight, and thank you also to all of our presenters. I really appreciate you all taking the time to come down and to lean in on this. So I just wanted to kind of wrap this up. We heard a lot of information from the Health Department and from our medical experts and Chief Collier. I wanted to just reiterate marijuana is legal. There was a vote, but we are really focusing on recreational marijuana and its impact on youth, and it is not legal for those under 21. So that's the category, first of all, that our action items are focusing on. I appreciated the list from the Board of Health on the, I'm sorry, from the Health Department, on the different recommended interventions to address this. And I wanted to say, a lot of those, frankly, are at the state level. So we've been very thoughtful in really trying to stay within our lane as a municipality and work on the tools that we have in front of us as a municipality that are within our authority. But some of those, frankly, are at the state level, and I think those are conversations that should be had. I also wanted to add, there are some new attachments to the agenda. A letter from Dr. Charles Hastings, who's a pediatrician in town, that was supportive. The Lancet article that was referenced that was attached. And I also have a Board of Health letter. I'm sorry I didn't get that attached earlier today, too many things flying by, but I passed it around to folks. The Board of Health heard this presentation and signed a letter in support of the actions that we are proposing. So finally, as for what we are proposing, we have two ordinances that we need to vote on tonight. The first one is Title V. That is to address the issue of having a moratorium on issuing any new business licenses for a period of at most two years. I think it doesn't need to be that long, but we're going to work on reevaluating our buffer zones here in Missoula in terms of where any new recreational dispensaries can be located. We did create buffer zones when this was originally, when recreational dispensaries were allowed back in January 2022. In retrospect, I think we needed to do a much better job. So lesson learned, and here we are. And we've got code reform. Our code reform project is in process, so we can hit pause on any new business licenses while our code reform consultants can do a lot of great GIS mapping, and we can have some thoughtful discussions on how, what a, how should I put it, numerous, numerous issues here. Number one, how far away? What are buffer zones, which clearly should be bigger than 500 feet? What they should be? If we look at all of our commercial areas, I think frankly, we should have less dispensaries. We have 51 currently. There are another eight currently in the business license queue that are grandfathered in because they'd already applied for a business license. That is significant. I think there will be attrition in the next year or two. We will see. Economics would dictate that it will happen at some point, but having buffer zones in place so that we can create the landscape that we would like to see in the long run is what the goal is. And I think that means not having dispensaries facing residential areas, maybe not having them on main public streets as much, having them a lot farther away from anything that serves youth, or schools, or churches, or other dispensaries. So by hitting pause on any new business licenses, applications, we can just stop that for a period of time while we go through this process of regrouping on our land use and zoning laws. The second one is Title VIII, and that focuses on having as strict of a municipal punishment as we can for anyone who is selling, distributing, or giving cannabis products to a minor. And I think that's really a matter of just showing that we have our house in order, that this is a high value in Missoula, that you shouldn't be crossing that line. And it really is, it falls underneath state law that already has this, but I think we can reiterate it at the local level and say, we take this seriously. So that's why that's in place. I think that covers everything I needed to say. I'm sure there are questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilor Jones. We'll move to questions from council before we hear the motions on the floor. So questions from council. I see Councilor Carlino, your hand is raised. Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you. I just had a couple of questions for the city attorneys. I was wondering what the current state and federal criminal sanctions are that cover what this Title VIII ordinance change is addressing? And along with that, I was wondering, when there are already criminal sanctions for the same violation covered under state or federal laws, like it is here, is it common practice for the city of Missoula to add additional criminal sanctions on top?
Yeah, I can try and answer that. There are state and federal laws regulating the transaction with minors. There's a specific state law on that front. Federal law generally prohibits the distribution or transaction of marijuana across the board, so it doesn't have, it may have a specific call-out for transactions with minors, but the issue with federal law on this point is that it's not enforceable by the city. You'd have to have the U.S. Attorney's Office prosecute that case, which I believe Merrick Garland, the Attorney General of the United States, has stated that the Department of Justice and the U.S. Attorney's Office is not particularly interested in those types of low-level marijuana crimes. So getting a federal prosecuting attorney to deal with this case like that is probably fairly limited. It's a little bit unclear in the way that the state law is written, who can enforce that. It's set up as a civil penalty under state law. I checked with the city attorney for prosecution, Keith Worthington, and our office is not prosecuted under that provision, and it's unclear whether our office has jurisdiction to, or whether her office has jurisdiction to prosecute those crimes. But there are state and federal prohibitions on transactions with minors for marijuana. And to your second question, it is not, I would say, common for the city to duplicate state and federal criminal sanctions, but we have done it a few times. I made a couple of quick notes. We have some provisions in Title IX for disturbing a piece, which is very similar to disorderly conduct, obstructing city officers, building code violations, vehicle operation in Title X, nuisance laws in Title VIII, for state law where we very closely or exactly duplicate state law provisions. We have a few where we duplicate federal law provisions. We have illegal discrimination in the fair housing laws in Title IX, and we duplicate some of the Clean Water Act and pollution prevention requirements from the Clean Water Act in Title XIII. So it's not very common for us to duplicate state and federal law, but it's not entirely unheard of either.
Thank you, Mr. Sudbury. Appreciate that. All right. Are there other council questions? In the room? In the room? Okay. Councilor Carlino, do you have another question?
Yeah, just a follow-up to that, if I could.
Sure, please.
Yeah, thanks for that thorough answer, Sudbury. And I was wondering, is there, so with duplication of, you know, city ordinances and criminal sanctions along with things that are already covered by state and federal law, is there a reason that we're looking at marijuana and not like alcohol, tobacco, under city ordinances, or like other criminal charges that we all, you know, don't agree with as well? Like, I'm wondering why we're focused on adding duplicative charges for this in particular?
Yeah, I might let the city council members who are sponsoring this answer the sort of policy question, but we do have provisions for underage transaction with minors for alcohol. So we have a very similar, in fact, we copied the provisions from that code section into this code section. So we have done that. So I think when some policy matters where the city wants to make it very clear where the city stands on policy, they want to, we have in the past adopted duplicative regulations. I mean, some of those that I mentioned earlier, like the Clean Water Act provisions for housing and legal discrimination, things where we want to really stake our flag that it's something that we're opposed to at a local level and a policymaker level, it's something that we've done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Sudbury. Councilor Jones?
Sure, I'll respond also. So I think something that goes to the root of your question is that there's been a change in Missoula in the last
Yeah, just a follow-up to that, if I could.
Sure, please.
Yeah, thanks for that thorough answer, Sudbury. And I was wondering, is there, so with duplication of, you know, city ordinances and criminal sanctions along with things that are already covered by state and federal law, is there a reason that we're looking at marijuana and not like alcohol, tobacco, under city ordinances, or like other criminal charges that we all, you know, don't agree with as well? Like, I'm wondering why we're focused on adding duplicative charges for this in particular?
Yeah, I might let the city council members who are sponsoring this answer the sort of policy question, but we do have provisions for underage transaction with minors for alcohol. So we have a very similar, in fact, we copied the provisions from that code section into this code section. So we have done that. So I think when some policy matters where the city wants to make it very clear where the city stands on policy, they want to, they're, we have in the past adopted duplicative regulations. I mean, some of those that I mentioned earlier, like the Clean Water Act provisions for housing and legal discrimination, things where we want to really stake our flag that it's something that we're opposed to at a local level, at a policymaker level. It's something that we've done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Sudbury. Counselor Jones?
Sure, I'll respond also. So I think something that goes to the root of your question is that there's been a change in Missoula in the last few years, a significant change. So that's when it's time for policymakers to take a hard look at it and see what changes in policy and what tools we have. So there's all sorts of other areas we can look at also, but for now, we're focusing on youth cannabis because this is a situation that frankly has arisen in the last few years and is escalating based on the data. So that's the focus of this referral.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jones. Appreciate that. Any other questions from council members? Not seeing any in the room, and not seeing any online. Then Chair Anderson of the Public Safety Operations Committee, would you please make our motions, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you talking a little bit longer so I can chew my jelly bean. Okay, so we have two motions on the floor. I will read them both, but then we can vote on them separately. So I make the recommended motion, an ordinance amending Title V of the Missoula Municipal Code to add a new section, 5.08.121, to enact a prohibition on new business licenses for retail adult-use dispensaries pending review of the regulations applicable to such operations as a part of the city's uniform development code project. Then the second motion is an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Missoula Municipal Code to add a new chapter, 8.39, entitled Restrictions on the Sale of Transaction of Cannabis Products Intended to Impose Additional Regulations Concerning the Sale of Transaction of Cannabis Products in the City, including imposing new criminal sanctions on those who sell or give cannabis products to individuals under the age of 21.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. The motions are on the floor. This opens the public hearing, and it is time for public comment on this agenda item. So we'll start with folks in the room. Please come on up. You have up to three minutes, and I'll help you out with the timer up here. Anybody for public, come on up. Identify yourself. Please spell your last name.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Newbold. Last name is spelled N-E-W-B-O-L-D. I'll try to talk really fast to be within the three minutes. First, thank you for your service. I'm a former school board member, so I truly appreciate the time and effort it takes to act in your capacity. And thank you also for addressing this issue. I'm here to voice my support of the passage of the pending ordinances. I'm obviously not part of the presentation. I'm just here providing public comment as a parent, having had firsthand experience with underage cannabis use. And I want to impress upon council members that this is indeed both an urgent and a significant problem amongst high schoolers in Missoula. Unfortunately, the cannabis industry in Montana is inadequately regulated, which is causing real harm to the adolescent members of our community. The mistaken assumption that what these dispensaries are distributing is quote-unquote "just weed" has resulted in many young people believing that the use of cannabis is relatively harmless. I can attest that it is not harmless. The THC concentrations, as you've heard, in the products being dispensed are off the charts, and the ease with which minors obtain these products is reprehensible. The way the products are now consumed make them virtually odorless and effortless, likely contributing to increased use. In my opinion, continuing to allow more dispensaries is like pouring gasoline on the fire. The fire is, we already have shockingly high THC concentrations, products that are so easy to buy, even a 16-year-old can walk in and do it, and consuming is as simple as pulling a small device out of your pocket anytime you feel like it. To make matters worse, or the fire even bigger, we are all well aware that you can drive hardly a quarter mile in Missoula without encountering a dispensary. We have allowed our teenagers to be essentially completely surrounded by easy access with ready availability exceeding that of any other regulated mind-altering substance. Is allowing even more dispensaries, more places to shop for a higher THC percentage, or a purer product experience, or a better price, or a more easygoing clerk that doesn't question who they are selling to, helping to put out our already raging fire? I would maintain that our current cannabis culture is the equivalent of a citywide dumpster fire. The level of use amongst underage consumers is higher than ever, and the consequence of that use is having both immediate negative effects, as well as effects that we can't even yet appreciate. Let's not continue to dump more fuel on the fire. The fallout of our current fire is kids who are developing substance use disorders due to their use at a young age, and in turn, suffering, and I don't use that word lightly, deteriorating mental health in a generation that already struggles with significant and challenging mental health issues due to a variety of factors. These are big issues, and until you have personal experience with them, they can be hard to wrap your head around. But allowing further proliferation of dispensaries in an already saturated city is certainly not doing anything to help extinguish the fire. I urge you to enact the moratorium proposed and increase penalties for underage sales. Please take a measured and reasonable step to at least quell the flames. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newbold. Anybody else for public comment this evening? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Molly Blair, B-L-A-I-R. I'm the Tobacco Education Specialist for Missoula County at the Missoula Public Health and a member of the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition, and also a mother of two teenage boys. I'll make this quick. Lots of wonderful things have already been said, but we've learned a lot over the years from the tobacco industry, and still learning new things every day with the vaping and e-cigarettes and the effects these products have on our youth. The tobacco industry and the cannabis industry have a lot in common. Both have similar health impacts, both have similar marketing and advertising tactics, both have addictive and dependency possibilities, and both need strong regulatory measures in place to protect our youth. Speaking as a mother of two teenage boys, seeing how my boys view cannabis these days is shocking. It is normalized in their world, and their peers are using at a higher rate because of how accessible it is. I appreciate all of you and the help and, excuse me, I appreciate all of you for protecting the health of our youth in Missoula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Say hello to the 21st century. Tick-tock, tick-tock. I'm open for business, Mr. K.
Mr. Spitzmacher, will you please identify yourself for the record?
Mr. Spitzmacher, Big K, S-P-I-T-Z-M-E-C-H-E-R.
Thank you.
Tick-tock, tick-tock. It's open for business. Peer pressure, how are you going to stop it? Limiting the number of cannabis shops won't do it. The undermarket, fentanyl, the new drug that's not touchable by Narcan is out there. I say bring it on. Because my ignorance that is spit on at the Pabarello, that I failed ignorance, that I don't do none of these substances, that's admired by the staff and supported with your rubber stamping, and I'm not kidding you. I've got a seven-day out because I mentioned, what's the topic today? I said Africa. That individual didn't like how I wanted the staff member in regards to the stabbing of my tire Sunday.
Mr. Spitzmacher, remember, we're talking about youth cannabis here. Thank you.
But the person that probably stabbed my tire was on cannabis at the Pabarello, and that's the problem. You're not going to stop it at all. You may limit it, but the source is out there and the money is to be had. And as far as limiting cannabis shop, I heard a whisper at the park where about 300 people went down the river. I heard cannabis. Tell me about cannabis. I won't tell you what the businesses are realizing. You should know that already, and I heard it. And I can't share his confidence because he didn't sign a release form. Let things slide the way they slide. Business takes care of itself, but cannabis will always be available no matter what because tick-tock, tick-tock brings them together.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Others wishing to make public comment this evening?
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor Davis, and congratulations on your relatively recent appointment. I'd like to thank those members of the city council that have deemed the issues of the day important enough to arrive in person. As a landowner, business owner, father, past teacher, conscious citizen, and local, I have maintained a residence here for nearly 50 years and plans to not leave. I have seen the great impact of the continuing loosening of cannabis use and possession. I spoke here early on when we had maybe dispensaries in the 20s numbers, and I was concerned then about the rapid expansion of the dispensaries in Missoula. The concerns then related primarily to the impact upon the commercial real estate market. As should be known, space availability dictates costs. Prices rise for all brick-and-mortar businesses that share similar zoning constraints. I know of locals who are being bought out of their businesses currently by out-of-state interests, so it does have an impact upon the entire small business community. I do understand that city revenue increases along with property tax increase, and the city itself does receive direct funds vis a vis the high tax of the cannabis sales. I do have concerns that that might limit the ability to restrict or backtrack upon the loosening of the restrictions of the use of cannabis. Missoula is now more expensive for goods and services than the surrounding areas. This impacts who comes to Missoula for goods purchases, okay? So we are currently encouraging drug tourism over the safe family tourism that we have enjoyed historically. This impacts all of us. We deserve to live in a high-trust society where our youth can roam free from the influence of brain-damaging drugs.
Sir, would you mind identifying yourself for the record?
I apologize.
It's okay.
It's been a while, and we haven't met. My name is Akilash Bemler, and I've spelled it before. I could spell it again if you could.
That'd be great.
Okay, it's A-K-H-I-L-E-S-H. Last is B-O-E-H-M-L-E-R.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I apologize for that. Just got one short ending. In my opinion, a safety campaign funded by taxes received would be an appropriate use of cannabis revenue, something much greater than billboards. I think it is high enough of a concern that it would deem a position and an actual campaign, such as maybe has been done for meth. I don't know how effective that was, but at least the effort. Everything right?
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
We're at three minutes. Go ahead, we can wrap it up.
Just a tidge, I'll be right done. Okay. Not trying to point fingers, but the city is complicit in the harm caused thus far to our youth, as well as the impact to the mentally ill users. This issue requires urgent response greater than the bill on the floor currently. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others in the audience that wish to make public comment on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing, sure, come on up.
Robert Dunlop, D-U-N-L-O-P. Just want to say I think you're headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. All right, anybody else in the room wanting to make public comment on this item tonight? Not seeing any then. Are there, oh, come on up.
Thank you. My name is Joyce Gibbs, G-I-V-B-S. Thank you, everyone, for your presentations this evening. They're very informative, and I just cannot help but be, to try to point out that the graphs that I saw, the alcohol use is a third or to a half more than the marijuana use. And it just, I support a similar ordinance for alcohol use and an educational campaign for the dangers of alcohol at any age. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Gibbs. Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Moore?
Bob Moore, O-O-R-E. I just wanted to say I was very impressed with this lady's statement. I think all of us should adopt her philosophy. My other philosophy is this ordinance, I don't think it's going to mean a thing. What will mean a thing is following, enforcing every law about the drugs with some prosecution. These ordinance that you're doing ain't going to do a thing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Is there any members of the public online? Mr. Larson, go ahead and unmute yourself. Mr. Larson, if you're able to unmute yourself, I'll go ahead and time you for three minutes on this side.
Yes, Matt Larson, Ward 3. Thank you for allowing me to speak. There are over 160 alcohol establishments in the Missoula City area. The City of Missoula imposes no special tax on these establishments, such as bars, restaurants, and breweries and micro-distilleries. These establishments accrue deaths by way of traffic fatalities, you know, they injure people. They do not necessarily attribute to the betterment of society at all. And we are not doing anything about those. We're not attributing any sort of special tax like we do with the marijuana licenses here in the City of Missoula. We have a 3% tax already. I would suggest that the city council raise that tax. What is different about the alcohol establishments versus the marijuana establishments or the cannabis establishments is that cannabis establishments are directed by the state only to be owned by in-state entities. So by placing a moratorium on these establishments in the city limits, you're effectively limiting entities that are only in-state, only made in Montana, from operating, which is creating more space for out-of-state entities to come in and gentrify Missoula, which is a continued theme here at the City of Missoula's city council chambers. We bend over backwards for developers. We do this, that, and the other, and we don't pay attention where the 3% tax on marijuana dispensaries is going. Is it filling poples, or is it going to psych wards where it should be? Is it going to education for preventing youth to engage in marijuana and engage in its consumption in the community? Or is it going to MRA projects for bank sidewalks? This is all in control of the city council that's elected by this community. But again, the city council will bend over backwards to approve a beer garden and a casino, no problem. It's just once there's 52 dispensaries that it gets 3% tax off of that pop up, and once people realize that, you know, the statistics about marijuana consumption are alarming, but the alcohol consumption statistics are twice as alarming.
Five seconds left.
There's something to talk about. I would implore the city council to actually do something with the 3% tax and raise it in a sensible manner rather than stifling a free market. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Other folks online wishing to make public comment this evening? Not seeing any additional hands raised. All right, that wraps up our public comment and our public hearing, and we'll bring it back to city council for any questions and/or comments. Members of the city council have questions or comments? Counselor Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I don't have any questions. I am one of the sponsors on this, and I have heard numerous presentations on it over the last year, and I just... And I just, you know, one of the things that we're tasked with as a community is public health and safety, and we don't, as a city, always have a lot of tools to do this. We don't have all the tools we want, for sure. So I think this is just a smart step toward trying to protect our youth. And I have two college-age daughters, and I have been around a lot of teenagers in the last few years, and I hear them talk about it, and the idea that they, you know, I...from my personal experience, I know that they talk about it in a way that it is not dangerous and it is better than alcohol. And so, you know, having that experience and then also kind of seeing what is been shown by the experts here in the room, I think, to me, it's a bit of a no-brainer to try to do something, and I think this is a good first step, and I appreciate everyone coming in and their comments.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the health experts and for members of the public for coming in and providing testimony. You know, I consider myself a fairly educated person, and I even learned a lot more about the concentration levels that we're seeing in marijuana, especially in the, you know, the way that they're distilling it down, and the increase of over 100% of youth being hospitalized, I mean, those are staggering numbers. And there's been a lot of comparisons to alcohol and regulation and this and that. Well, how the state regulates it and the authorities that we have at the municipal level to regulate that are not the same as alcohol, and so it's a really unfair comparison to try and say, "Well, you're doing this, why don't you do it for that?" And, you know, we'd love to be able to increase the taxes on that. State legislature won't allow it, 3% is the cap. We impose that in our community and we're trying to put it towards good use, but it's actually not that very big amount of money. And it just, you know, what we can do, I think this ordinance, and I think Councilor Jones, for all the work that she's done on this, is, you know, trying to use the tools we have in our toolbox to address this really alarmingly systemic, you know, health crisis that we're facing in our community. And I think it's impair...and it's on all of us to work to educate people, you know, educate my nephews, who I help raise, and about the dangers of it, because I do think that what Ms. Cheryl said in regards to the sort of laissez-faire, "Oh, it's just, you know, it's herb, it's grass, it's whatever, it's easy, it comes in fun gummy flavors," has given this perception. I think a lot of the ways that, you know, wine coolers and, you know, other alcoholic beverages of, you know, yesteryear, not that they still don't exist today, you know, had the same effect on alcohol. And I think that we would be wise to learn the lessons from alcohol and tobacco and not let it languish and, you know, affect entire generations before we really address it for the crisis that it is. It can be used by adults in a...not healthy, but like, you know, a way that is regulated and just as alcohol is, and, you know, if an adult decides to smoke tobacco, then that's their right. But we...it's incumbent upon all of us to do what we can to educate and protect the next generation, and this is a good first step. And wish we had more tools, but hopefully we'll send some good people to the legislature who will help advocate for that. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I would just add to what my colleague, Ms. Anderson, said. Additionally, the ability to tax at the cap max of 3% was voted on by the voters, so it wasn't even a city council decision. The reality is that the way the state regulates alcohol and the way the state regulates cannabis are very different, because cannabis was voted in by the public and then the legislature had to backfill regulations and frankly didn't do the best job. So I think it's important to point out that focusing on this issue right now doesn't mean that we don't recognize there are other issues in...that impact our youth and things of that nature. Many of the rules around alcohol are more easily enforced by the local police forces across the state, whereas many of the issues around cannabis have to do with advertising and things like that and are enforced by a very understaffed state agency. So I think in the broadness of this conversation, it's important to kind of keep that in mind. I also think that because the dispensaries are basically one product shop, they're just more noticeable than many of the other examples people have used and kind of why we're looking at that. I worry about the cap actually having the opposite effect and making them more valuable in the short term. So I think it's important that we focus on the buffers sooner than later and kind of find the more permanent solution and move on from this cap, because I actually don't think long-term that it is the right move. And within that conversation around buffers, we can discuss if there are areas where, under our current policy, dispensaries are allowed that aren't maybe ideal, that lessons that have been learned since this came in. There are examples in the past where, over time, we can give encouragement to phase those out over a period of time. I think there was one other thing I wanted to touch on, but I think Ms. Anderson actually hit it, that alcohol licenses are actually regulated by the state already as well, so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison. But I do really appreciate everything that's been presented to us and everybody who has come multiple times to kind of educate on this issue and recognize that it is an important one.
Thank you. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just start by saying I'm in support of both these motions. I think we've heard ample testimony from medical professionals, psychiatrists, clinicians, that really do an excellent job of going over the impacts of youth THC use, cannabis use, on developing minds, particularly those that have predispositions, things like schizophrenia, bipolar, and what have you. So in my mind, that makes a very compelling argument. But on top of that, I look to Chief Collier's testimony as well with what his school resource officers have found, you know, in the day-to-day setting within our own community here, as well as the R doctors within our community here, and the experiences that those folks have, and to the youth within this particular community, I think is important to note. The other thing I'll say too, just from my experience in law enforcement, having served from '99 to 2022, is what I've seen as effect on youth in terms of children in crisis, youth in crisis, and effect it has in the home, and effect it has at school, detriment that it has with learning capability during that time. And the thing that's scary about THC products in particular is how easily that they could be concealed in plain sight, unlike alcohol. You know, if you're a parent, you have kids, you have teenagers, you know, I've been there, been through that, you know, you could smell alcohol on the breath, you could smell alcoholic beverages spilled on the floor, it's hard to clean up, smelled in a vehicle, you know, I've had my kids use my vehicle in the past and get in it, a few days later myself, I smell, and it's like, hmm, someone's had a beer in here. But it's readily available, it's readily able to be detected, but some of these THC products, I mean, you could really hide this stuff really well in plain sight, the candies, gummies, cookies, baked goods, mustards, ketchups, lollipops, all sorts of products that could just be sitting there and they look like any other candy or a food product that's out there, and not to mention vapes and these cigarettes that give off absolutely no odor, no color whatsoever. So it really puts parents and teachers and others in a very precarious position to be able to deal with that particular situation. So, you know, just kind of a difference there between the issue of alcohol, which of course is also important, but, you know, with THC products, it makes it all the more difficult to deal with if you're a teacher or a parent. So for all those reasons, I'll be supportive of these motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thanks, thanks everyone for the comments tonight and the great presentations and all of the information. I'll keep this short, but I think we're the municipal level, we don't have the biggest tools in the toolbox, but I think it's incumbent on us to use what we have. I do think this is, hopefully, a robust discussion at the state in the next legislative session, because they have the much greater powers for regulation. I mean, I think they should be having some discussions about the level of THC and capping that. I think they could also give local municipalities the authority to cap the total number of dispensaries. So there's a lot of discussions to have there. I think there's 18% tax on cannabis products that goes to the state, and I think a lot more of that should be used for enforcement, because it's clear that there's not a robust enforcement happening, and that's a no-brainer right there. So I'm hoping part of the goal of this entire exercise is starting to get the word out that our communities in Montana need to be paying some attention to this. This is the long game. I appreciate Mike, co-councilor Mike Nugent's comments about will this incentivize those stores to stay because we pull the ladder up for a period of time. It is a short-term moratorium, and it just, having watched it unfold for the last two and a half years, it became clear to me we needed to do...we needed to take some action and hit pause while we work through what tools we can use. So I think in the long run, attrition is going to be the biggest tool, and I think that will come, and I think we're in this for the long game. And then finally, I just wanted to talk about, well, two more things, actually. I hear the comments about alcohol. Having spent the last 12 months talking to a lot of folks about this project, my understanding is that the experts across the nation are starting to look at that comparison of alcohol and cannabis, and actually starting to lean in the direction that in terms of developing brains, cannabis actually causes more damage. And I think you give it a couple of years and all of those studies will come out, and there we have it. Granted, alcohol can also cause huge damage, and if somebody dies in a car accident because of whatever substance, that's the end result. But we have a situation in Missoula where we've had alcohol use amongst minors for decades and decades. I know, I grew up in this town. I think the culture has shifted, there's a lot...I don't know if there's a lot less alcohol consumption, but I can tell you, having had my kids in school compared to when I was in school, there's definitely less. But now we have opened up this new box and created a new harm on our young folks. And it's a combination of legalizing, it's a combination of messaging that it's safe, and it's a combination of the fact that it's so potent. So I think we've had an industry that has expanded and grown and developed rapidly, but culturally, we're a couple of decades behind, and that mismatch is causing some serious harm in our community with our youth. So that's why we're taking this action, and I hope it spurs a lot of bigger conversations and creates a better environment. And I'm in support of ordinance.
Thank you for your comments. And Councilor Becerra?
Thank you. I want to, first of all, thank my colleague, Councilwoman Jones, for spearheading this work. Also, I want to thank our health department staff, Faith Price, and everyone in the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition for educating us and bringing forward this issue and the challenges that we face. Also, Dr. Cunningham Davis and Wilson for your expert testimony on this issue, really appreciated, and it really does resonate with me. I think what's important for us to keep in mind is that at the core, this has always been a public health issue, one that affects a vulnerable part of our community, and that falls squarely within what we are here to do on city council. It's not about controlling the market, but that is a way that we have to ensure that we can do what we can within our parameters to protect those who are most vulnerable in our population. And also, I just want to say that this is not an abstract issue that we read about that happens somewhere else, this is happening in our high schools, it's happening in our middle schools. And so, you know, definitely something that we need to consider and put in place measures that we...and use the tools that we have at our disposal, and I think this is one of them. So I am in support of it and thankful to...grateful for all the work that everyone has put into this and all the information and education.
Thank you, Councilor Becerra. Councilor Vasika?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say in response to one commenter this evening, the meth-not-even-once billboards and commercials across the state, they used to be a lot more graphic and they had a huge impact on me, so maybe that amount of shock needs to come back for very harmful things. Similar to when we were discussing the flavored vaping products, I am against the premise to punish law-abiding adults and business owners for the illegal activities of minors and those who supply to minors. So I won't be in support of these ordinances tonight regarding the amending Chapter 8, the punishment. I am concerned specifically about the age bracket between 18 and 21. You can go and die for your country, but you can't drink a beer, smoke a cigarette, nor smoke marijuana, but that is my issue with the federal government. Well, I guess the state government too, because marijuana is still illegal federally. But I do imagine that this...these ordinances, changes do have the votes to pass tonight, so not going to cause a fuss about it, I'm just going to not support either of the...either of these motions. I do really appreciate all the research that has happened. I do...it is really concerning, hearing all the physical and mental impacts of the high THC levels, but I...that's really concerning with the youth, that it is already illegal for the youth to possess and to use this product, so that's one of the reasons why I'm not going to be in support. But I really do appreciate all the testimony tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comments. It looks like that wraps up our council comments this evening, and so that will bring us then to a roll call vote, and we will do those independently. So Connor, if you will go ahead and do a roll call vote for each of the two motions that are on the floor, please.
Yes. So with the first vote being an ordinance amending Title 5, we'll start with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino? Farmer? Jones?
Yes.
Nugent? Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Anderson? And Becerra? That is seven in favor and two opposed, it passes.
Okay, thank you, Connor.
And the second vote on an ordinance amending Title 8, we'll start with Carlino. Farmer?
Yes.
Jones? Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
That is also seven in favor and two opposed, and that passes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Connor. That then concludes Item 5.3. I want to thank everybody for the presentations this evening, for the public comment, for the thoughtful dialogue amongst council members and others. And we will continue on with the agenda, and more to come as these roll out. Thank you again for your engagement this evening, folks. Okay, we don't have any new business for the agenda this evening, and so we'll move on to the consent agenda. So Connor, if you would go ahead and read the consent agenda, each item, and present the consent agenda list... the consent agenda list on screen for folks watching on MCAT, that would be great.
Yes, let me share my screen. Okay, so the consent agenda for tonight. Item 8.1 is accounts payable, ratify accounts payable claims for checks dated July 2, 2024 in the amount of $1,156,269.07. Item 8.2 is approving accounts payable claims for checks dated July 9, 2024 in the amount Item 8.3 is confirming the mayor's reappointment of Scott Sterns as a large properties representative and Karen Sippi as a small properties representative to the Downtown Business Improvement District for terms beginning immediately and expiring on May 31, 2028. Item 8.4 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a development agreement with Prolo Family Clovis LLC to construct the realignment of a portion of Grant Creek, a portion of the Grant Creek Trail, and acquire the easements necessary to construct a portion of George Elmer Drive and a future-to-be-named Trail easement. Item 8.5 is to approve the purchase of Vaughn Chopper pumps for installation at the Kelly Island Lift Station at a cost not to exceed $396,352.24. Item 8.6 is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Sanderson Stewart for the Orange Street and Craig Lane Traffic Signal Project at a cost not to exceed $71,027.50. Item 8.7 is approve the grant of a 10-foot-wide underground utility easement to Northwestern Energy and authorize the mayor to sign a standard city grant of underground easement through Parklands subsequent to provision of final legal discretion. And finally, item 8.8 is a setting the joint city-county public hearing for August 28, 2024 to consider adopting a resolution authorizing expenditure of up to $344,000 open space bond funds towards the acquisition of a conservation easement of the interproperty consisting of 1,667 acres to be held by Five Valleys Land Trust as presented. And that is the consent agenda for tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Connor. We'll go ahead to public comment, and then we will note the item to be separated. Is there any public comment from folks that are in the room tonight on the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. How about online? Is there anybody online wishing to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Campbell has asked that Item 8.1 be separated for the vote, and so what we'll do is we'll go ahead, Connor, and we'll take everything from 8.2 to 8.8 on the consent agenda for a voice vote, and then we'll go ahead and do the same for the separate agenda Okay, and before we do so, hold on one quick second. Counselor Campbell, would you like to speak to Item 8.1?
Yeah, if I may, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can, I'd like to share my screen. Do that.
Okay, it's up there.
Okay, this is from invoices payable, July 2, 2024, line 3, there's a payment to Judge Eli Parker, amount of $313.60 for staff appreciation lunch, and I'm going to speak to it a little bit here. Just a little bit of background, I saw this expenditure this morning, and I reached out to Lee Griffin at the Treasurer's Office and see if I get further clarification on this. This was shortly after 10:00 this morning. Very quickly, she responded that this was a municipal court expenditure and forward my request to the three municipal court judges for their opportunity to offer an explanation for the expenditure. Just checking my phone here and work email as of 8:55 PM, they have yet to respond to my request for further information, so I take that as, on their part, that they're not going to provide the information they requested. Not the largest expenditure, certainly, you know, we've used the term drop in the bucket from time to time, but I have a problem here that although we are looking to do appreciation of staff within department here, and I just want to say first and foremost that I appreciate the work that staff within municipal court is doing, administrators, the people that work the counter there, they come up and have to deal with, I rate people day in, day out, to pay fines, to see the judge, whoever have you. So I salute the work they do, and, you know, to extent that those in charge, Department over there, reward their service, I feel they have the right to do so, but they should do so with their own money, with the way their own pocket has been done with administrators in that department in the past. So to see that we're using $313.60 of taxpayer money for this appreciation lunch just strikes me wrong for all the wrong reasons. I just, I look at this, and I think someone coming in to pay a fine, to pay a traffic ticket, or what have you, the idea that they would come in, be compelled to pay a fine, compelled to pay a traffic ticket, and to have to cut a check to City Missoula to make payment on that, and in turn realizing that, albeit a tiny portion, but a portion of that money, which I understand gets turned in with, you know, the general fund, and it gets filtered back, you know, to a certain extent by allocations from us as a state council, but ultimately, to know that some of that money is going to be allocated for a lunch party is unacceptable. And I know municipal court's going to be in here on Wednesday to do a budget presentation at 9:00 AM for committee budget and finance. I have many questions of them, of what they want to do going forward within that department, and I look forward to that conversation. But for here and now, I cannot in good conscience vote to allocate that $313.60 of taxpayer money for this particular event, and it's unfortunate that we don't have line item ability to separate that particular item out within the totality of all the expenditures that occurred within July 2, but, you know, I cannot in good conscience, you know, say the things I've said about this expenditure and vote for Item 8.1. You know, there's an old saying from centuries ago, infamous Lee, you know, let them eat cake. I feel the municipal court judges, and not responding to me today, have made that statement. I would ask them when that comes in to pay a fine on a traffic ticket or a fine for something else, and you're a taxpayer in this town, make sure you get your tiny piece of cake in return. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Are there other council members that wish to speak to this agenda item before we take a vote? Not seeing any in the room, and is there any council members online? Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, just with 8.1, we're simply just paying the city's bills here, but we can discuss things like that, the city budgeting process, or other, at other times, but with the claims, we're just paying the city's bills, and I think there's quite larger charges on here for all sorts of things that are quite concerning. I'm not concerned about city staff members eating lunch, though. I think that's, that's a fair use of the budget, but for the sake of this vote, we're just voting to pay the bills for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino. Are there other council comments on Item 8.1? Okay, not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and we'll take the random order I suggested earlier, Connor, and do 8.2 to 8.8. We'll do the bulk of the consent agenda first, and we can do that with a voice vote.
All those in favor of the consent items 8.2 to 8.8, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll go ahead and take 8.1 separately, please, and we could also do that with a voice vote.
Okay. Item 8.1, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed, say nay.
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 The ayes have it.
I believe that was two nays, and Counselor Campbell and Counselor Vasika, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, everybody, that brings us then to agenda, item nine, and that is regular business. We did have a item moved from a previous council meeting back for committee consideration, and so that is item 9.1. B under the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee, and the project is the Corner Farm Open Space Project. This project has had a presentation already. We, the chair of the committee is not present, but has requested that Counselor Jones restate the motion. We realize there are folks that represent staff and organizations here for information. We're not asking you to re-present this evening, but really appreciate you being here for information, and so we'll go ahead and turn this right over to Counselor Jones.
Great, thank you. Chair, City Council Savage, who's the chair of this committee, is not here tonight, and I think her vice was Counselor Nelson, and he's also not here, so she just asked me to get this moving forward again. So I'll make the motion in a second. I just want to say we had sent it, I think there was a request from Counselor Anderson to send it back to committee to just get some information from the county commissioners as to whether or not they would look at a portion of their open space funds, and I think that information came through, and I'll have, maybe Mayor Davis would have Counselor Anderson speak to that in a minute, but I'll just get the motion on the floor, and it's been a busy last three or four weeks, and wanted to get this item heard so that folks could move forward one way or the other. So the motion is to approve the expenditure of up to $310,000 of open space bond funds towards the fee title acquisition of Corner Farm by Trust Montana, consisting of eight acres of agricultural land.
Thank you. So the motion's on the floor, we'll restate that simply for clarity purposes for the, for the audience and for council as well. And Counselor Anderson, you had requested this to go back to committee, and I know you'd like to have the opportunity to speak to that and some of the information that you were seeking.
Yes, thanks so much, Madam Mayor, and yes, I was the one who, on the floor, when this came through for a final vote, asked it to have it go back to committee, and not necessarily to actually have another committee hearing, but it was the only sort of procedural motion we had available to us to press pause and ask a couple of questions. And I think one of the questions myself and several other council members had was sort of how do various projects get allocated with the city's budget of open, or city's portion of the open space bond funds versus the county's portion of open space bond funds? And, you know, I don't think any of us, well, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I didn't have a problem with the, you know, the preservation of ag land. I understood that that was one of the things that was the goal of the open space bond when it was put forth to the voters, and I do believe it is an important thing to try to create or try to save, but my question was just why is this, why are some projects, joint projects with the city and the county, and why are some projects all city? And are we being, doing the best use of our funds, being fiscally responsible with it? So the questions that I was able to get back really came in the form of last, or a week and a half ago, when we had a presentation about another piece of open space acquisition in regards to the Missoula Valley Planning Area, and I'm looking to the staff for if not, if I got it right. Okay, go, yes, and, and, and a really good detailed explanation that I think that some of us were lacking in the understanding of the interlocal and how things are getting to beat out. And so the fact that, you know, it was pretty clearly defined within that interlocal that says, okay, if it's, the project is within a certain area, the Missoula County Planning Area, which is not just the city limits of Missoula, then the city, you know, kind of takes the lead on it. And then there are some examples where, you know, there has made the decision to be in partnership, like Marshall Mountain, like the thing that we'll hear in August, and that was really helpful. We also asked the county commissioners kind of to weigh in formally on whether or not they felt that this was a project that they'd be willing to go in on jointly, and they responded, thanks but no thanks, and kind of sought back to the interlocal agreement that I think some of us were lacking a real clarity on, and I think that I'm comfortable with the answers. I appreciate staff giving those answers, giving us a little extra time to just make sure that we are asking all the questions and being good stewards of, you know, what is a limited amount of money, and there are always going to be more asks of that money than we have to fund, so just making sure that we're utilizing the best use of our dollars and leveraging them whenever we can.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Anderson, and this regular business section of the agenda sometimes is an item where people will hold something out from committee so they can wish to speak to it, and, and then there are times where it is an item like this where it may have gone back to committee, some additional information. And so our normal procedure is that public comment has already been taken during the public hearing, but I do know that there's been a little bit of time here, if there's folks that wish to provide public comment this evening, I'm certainly happy to hear that, and so if folks want to speak to it, you're more than welcome to. We've had robust public comment during the hearing that was held a few weeks ago, but more than welcome to come up now if you wish to.
BK Spitzmacher, S.P.I.T.Z., M.S.H.R., I fully support this as an investment for the future of Missoula. May it stay as an agricultural piece of property. Anybody that objects it will look at it as a great size park for the educational opportunity how we use to survive our past.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Other members of the public?
Robert Dunlop, Missoula, Montana. I have not changed my position since I talked to you before. This application is full of fluff. Forty thousand, or forty tons of fresh vegetables. It could be, but we don't have a fresh vegetable shortage problem. Just go to the farmer's market. I raise a lot of my own vegetables, as do many, many, many people in the city of Missoula. The difference is, I'm not asking the city for $313,000, nor are those other people that Missoula want to raise vegetables. Now, for those members of the land trust that want to raise vegetables, there are plenty of opportunities. We have community gardens in our local parks, we have gardens in the local schools. If the local park or the local school does not have one of those facilities to raise vegetables, then make it your business to go to the school board, or the principal, or the Parks Department and tell them to put one in. The only thing I can see the city getting out of this, outside of that select group that will be there, is to drive by that piece of ground and look at it and say, that's where the city spent $313,000 because the county commissioner didn't want whole carrots or wheat peas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Anybody else in the public wishing to make comment this evening?
My name is Neva Hassanin. It's H.A.S.S.A.N.E.I.N., and I just want to thank the city for the consideration of this project. Agricultural land preservation has Agricultural land preservation has long been a concern in our community. I was really struck when the Open Space Advisory Committee considered this, and it was really the young people on the committee that swayed the day, and they said, we can't afford houses, we can't afford farmland, and this project is an example of not just protecting farmland, but doing it in a way that ensures accessibility by a beginning farmer who has been locked out of the market and will be a beautiful place for people to go, not just to drive by, as was just said, but to go get vegetables, to get to know their farmer. We're planning a housing development adjacent to the farm protection, as well as a commercial farm business that will be on the site. And so I think when we get all this done, you all have to come to the party and celebrate this. This will be something that in the future, when your family comes to town to visit, it's going to be a place that you take them, because it is going to be quintessentially Missoula and, and a real example of what it means to be the Garden City. So I want to thank you all for your consideration, and thanks, Zach Covington and Kaylee Becker, and everyone who has helped us move this project forward on behalf of Trust Montana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hassanin. Anybody else wishing to make public comment? All right, how about anybody online? Mr. Larson?
Hello, this is Matt Larson. Thanks for allowing me to speak again. I grew up on a farm, and sometimes some things associated with farming stink to high hell, and I think this might be one of them, as one of the former con- commenter spoke to earlier. When farming, when farming seeks this much subsidy from the city, you question whether the city itself is the, the issue at hand. And I think in this case it is. Some of the city's policies regarding development and regarding zoning have, have pretty much part and parcel caused this, this, this situation. And I find it ironic that this, this piece of land involves the, the sitting, the former lands of the sitting county commissioner. It's, it's, it's just, I don't know, it's just, it's just very indicative again of this, this body and the self-dealing nature of it. And the, the nonprofit sector in this town, which continually pats itself on the back for helping a handful of people at one time at one, one point in time, and then shoving everyone else to the wayside. It's, it's great to see, though, because we, we get to pay for it all and remember it in perpetuity. So I guess we'll see it happen again continually with new, new farmlands, and, and that's something that we have to look forward to and hold our breaths for as, as, as ag owners and landowners and, and future generations. So it's, it's, it's really like a teardrop moment that, you know, this generation is, is, is really feeling very impactful, very impactful. So hats off, hats off to City Council for these, these three or four plots this one time. I think it'll be cool.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson, and that looks like it wraps up our public comment, and so we'll go back to questions or comments from council before we do a roll call vote on this agenda item. Are there any questions or are there any comments from council before we vote? Counselor Sherrill?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just want to say, because I feel like this gets confused a lot, this is open space bond funds, and we have different pots of money, and we can't just move it from one, one pot to another. So, you know, this campaign in 18, as all of you or many people know, I ran the open space bond campaign in 18, and it was for open spaces, rivers, and farmland, and that is the campaign that we ran, that is what the wording and the bond language said, that is what the voters voted on and resoundingly approved. So I, I just think it's important as we talk about money and then we talk about how we spend money, you know, this is, this is not from the general fund, this is a specific, it has specific things we can use it for, and farmland is one of them, and so I, I think this is a good project. We have not spent any money at this point on farmland from the city's portion of the open space bond. We have done river areas, we have done Marshall Mountain, and we've done some wildlife quarters and things, so I, I'm, I'm happy to support this and look forward to, to seeing where it goes.
Thank you for your clarifying comments, President Sherrill. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So obviously, there's been a lot of interest in a proposal for the city to move forward with the allocation of $310,000 of 2018 open space bond money, allowing Trust Montana to acquire Corner Farm from the current owner of Corner Farm Village LLC. Indeed, agricultural land is at a premium. At first glance, this proposal seems to be a good fit for such an allocation. However, there are facts pertaining to recent history of this property that are cause for concern. From the Climate Conservation and Parks Q and A sheet attached to this agenda, it lays out recent ownership history with the current owner, along with Josh Slotnick, and another partner purchasing the property in 2020. As such, the partnership was formed called Fortuitous Land Company LLC. This was changed to Corner Farm Village LLC due to the title error in corrective warranty deed was filed. On November 10th, 2022, a boundary line adjustment was applied for by Corner Farm Village LLC and gained approval from county commissioners Juanita Vero and Dave Strohmeyer. It's important to note that Commissioner Josh Slotnick recused himself in this matter a month prior on October 17th, 2022, by way of a signed conflict of interest disclosure. In that disclosure, he references pending boundary line relocation and variance to take place sometime within the next 12 months. Commissioner, excuse me, Miss Little County Commissioners Vero and Strohmeyer later approved the zoning variance on February 9th, 2023 to allow agricultural businesses as an accessory use, without ever giving mention Commissioner Slotnick's conflict of interest in the hearing. At the time of the variance approval, the permitted agri-led businesses uses now allowed include food and beverage establishments, research cooperative and/or training facility, galleries and/or exhibition spaces, agricultural manufacturing and production, excluding cannabis products, artisan manufacturing and production, farm stand, market, retail store, and up to six outdoor special events per year. After the plan for the aforementioned boundary line adjustment was completed on August 3rd, 2023, Commissioner Slotnick and one other party officially disassociated themselves from Corner Farm Village LLC on August 25th, 2023, leaving the one current owner of Corner Farm Village LLC. One of my main concerns with this proposal today, or any other that comes before me as a member of this body, is the appearance of reproach by my constituents and the public in general. I've lived most of my adult life striving to conduct myself beyond reproach in various capacities of public service, striving to maintain public trust. Unlike my previous positions of public service, I've now been elected by my fellow Missoulian, so expect me to conduct myself as previously mentioned. As part of my campaign to be on this body, I, just like everyone else seated here, depend one degree or another on campaign donations. People donate to political campaigns for reasons I won't begin to attempt to enumerate. However, my personal experience shows most donate because they feel you align with certain values or philosophies, more so perhaps than others running for office. As such, there's nothing wrong with expressing these values when selected, I suspect. So my donors, like what they've seen from me to this point, I suspect perhaps some have been somewhat disappointed in my actions, but the bottom line is, I'm going to make my decisions based on what is right and proper to me, from my own point of view, lived experiences, and information obtained bearing favor to nobody. I firmly believe this is true of all my colleagues as well. Nevertheless, everyone on this body must remain vigilant and proceed in care in matters where the lines of propriety become blurred, as I believe to be the case here. The owner of Corner Farm Village has and continues to be a prolific campaign donor to local and state races for over 24 years, donations totaling thousands of dollars. This information can be obtained from the Commissioner of Political Practices website through the Campaign Electoral Reporting System. The owner of Corner Farm Village has donated to individuals on county commission before being heard for a boundary line adjustment in variance. Perhaps this speaks as to why they now shun involvement in the proposal before this body. The owner of Corner Farm Village has also donated to individuals seated at this table as well. It's important to note, of course, that merely receiving campaign contributions from people, organizations, bringing business before this body does not in most cases create conflict. Unfortunately, here in this proposal, there's a difference. This proposal, be it within intermediary like Trust Montana or not, is giving the owner of Corner Farm Village a direct pecuniary benefit. In plain language, it's going to put a sizable chunk of taxpayer money through this open space bond, $310,000 to be exact, into her own pocket. As such, I feel compelled to remind my colleagues that this action is more than just merely promoting preservation of agricultural lands, an aspiration I suspect is shared by the owner of Corner Farm Village and many other members of this body. In this instance, I feel troubled, but why it may be construed by my constituents and the greater public as a whole as an attempt by the owner of Corner Farm Village to pay to play. In this proposal, as with any other, we must make our decisions not only by personal interest or philosophy, but always, always in what I call the light of propriety. Personally, I believe we should strive to preserve agricultural lands, particularly have the means afforded to us by taxpayers by way of the 2018 open space bond. Unfortunately, given the history of this parcel, the manner in which the owner of Corner Farm Village has engaged with public officials and candidates for office in resulting pecuniary benefit to the owner, the light of propriety is showing me I must vote no to this proposal, and I urge my colleagues to consider this information as they reach their own personal decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell, and next up is Counselor Nugent.
Okay, I'm going to come back to that, Bob. The conversation around agriculture in, in Missoula, and particularly the pressures that land use has put on agriculture, has been something, obviously, Missoula's been struggling with for a long time, and I, even though I have great attendance in city council things, have missed both of these conversations. So I just want to say on the record that I appreciate the effort to bring in agrihood to life. I think that it is something that, that we need to see if we can make it work and that we can create a replicatable model, and it's something that we heard lots of comments years ago when the county was debating the subdivision regulation, and following that, the, the open space bond specifically talked about agriculture protection, and so I think it's very reasonable to evaluate this project and, and say this is something that is, we've been directed by the voters to, to track. And so I want to put that out there that I appreciate the, the efforts that everybody has gone through to bring this to fruition, and, and I intend to vote for it tonight. That was going to be all I was going to say, but, Mr. Campbell, I have some concerns about the implications that you are making. Our system, obviously, of government is not perfect, but every citizen has the right to participate, and how they choose to participate is, you know, within the legal bounds of what's defined in, you know, contribution laws, state, or however you want to go from there. And I think that if the implication's going to be made that people around this body or with the county commissioners make decisions based on campaign donations, there should be more than just stating, here's A, here's B, and here's how we got there. I think that that really opens us up to a, maybe, maybe a conversation that, that frankly might discourage people from participating, both on this side of the table, but also on the other side of the table, and I think I understand what you're getting at, but by that same logic that, that you're kind of putting out there, that if, if somebody donated to a campaign, they, they might curry favor, the people involved in this project have never donated to any of my campaigns, in fact, they've been very vocal against my campaigns, and I am still going to vote for it because I think that it's a good project, and I respect all of my colleagues that they are able to evaluate projects based on the criteria that's in front of us and what, what we're actually expected to do. And so just like I'm not voting no because I, I have previous political disagreements with some of the people involved, I believe that my colleagues are also voting yes outside of any of those things, and I give them that benefit of the doubt, and I appreciate you bringing it up, and I think it's a conversation that's, that's, it's okay to have publicly, but I think that we need to give a lot of respect and deference to our, our colleagues, that they know how to do the right thing, and I think we have to be really careful on the implications that we make in comments around this issue. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent, and Counselor Becerra?
Senator, um, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, ag land preservation is one of those uses that were explicitly mentioned in the open space bond as, as legitimate and important places to invest those taxpayers' dollars, and so I, I think this, this project fits that, that meets that requirement, it, it checks that box, and I am supportive of it. I think from a land's perspective, as we continue to build and, and follow our own focus inward type of development, more and more land in our community is consumed by more and more the housing development or just development in general, and, and therefore it creates that necessity for, for us to think strategically and, and be proactive in, in the, in how we leverage these, 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 these taxpayers' dollars in, in the form of land that we can preserve for future use. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of this proposal. I think it's innovative, I think it looks at ways to collaborate and bring different partners to the table. So to me, it's, it's a well set out project, and it deserves a vote. Now, I do want to ask our city attorney to weigh in on this issue of campaign contributions and how that could be perhaps as insinuated by my colleague, Mr. Campbell, as a conflict of interest, if, if you wouldn't mind, Ryan?
The system, so there's no bright light rule on, on this, but, so our political system is sort of built on, people give campaign contributions and it's not considered, you know, I've not seen any cases where, or, or, you know, E.G. opinions where somebody gives a campaign contribution and it's considered to, you know, disqualify that, as somebody receives the donation from voting on anything that has anything to do with that person or that person's business or interests. So, you know, our, our system is sort of understands that there are, money's required to run for office these days, and the Supreme Court of the United States has ruled several times that campaign contributions are sort of free speech. So I think in my mind, there would need to be more of a, of a financial interest in the outcome of the, whatever's being voted on. the outcome of the, whatever's being voted on by the person who's voting on it more than so advanced layer connection between a campaign contribution because, you know, at that point, everybody's going to have to have a detailed list of their campaign contributions, and they're going to have to cross-reference that list every time a vote comes up or a real estate development comes up or anything of that sort. I don't think that's something that disqualifies. You know, if there was more facts than just a campaign contribution, you know, that would be something we'd have to look at on a case-by-case basis and weigh whether or not the state ethics rules or the state's ethics rules or some sort of fairness or propriety guidance elements from state law or the Montana Supreme Court are available to, to judge against, you know, those additional facts. But just based on campaign contributions alone, I don't, I don't think that's something that disqualifies.
Mayor, if I may finish my comments?
Yes, please.
Thank you. You know, while I appreciate the, the detailed detective work that my colleague, Mr. Campbell, has done, it, it, I, I feel that this borderline, it's an accusation that merits no legal standing, as we just heard. And in fact, it goes, it goes as far as, as attacking the ability of a council member to do, to do our work with integrity because of campaign contributions. And I think it's, it's a conversation that perhaps, you know, could be further explored, but one that I see not having any place in this, in this project at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Sure. I just want to say, first of all, that I, I think this is a good project, and I'm happy to support it. The Open Space Bond that passed in 2018 did have a component focusing on ag land, and I think this is really our first foray in that direction, and it's, it's a good thing to do. I read through the documents, and I think they, lots of due diligence. It's, it's in a good place, so I'm happy to vote in support of it. And as for any type of conflict of interest, I think the appropriate route is to go to the city attorney and give them the full factual situation and get an opinion from the city attorney long before this ever comes on the floor. And then if there is an issue and someone needs to recuse themselves and doesn't, then that's the problem. But I really don't appreciate nor agree with general accusations that are made on the floor when I don't think there's much backing them up. We have a system where people donate in our community to candidates. And if, if we're going to have a system where anyone who ever donates can never interact with the city in any situation involving money, then pretty much we're going to, it's a slippery slope to me that we will have people self-funding their campaigns who have the resources to do that. And that is going to limit a lot of our options for representation in this city. So I understand people are being diligent, but I think we need to pull back and look at the big picture. And the big picture tonight is, we have a great project that's in front of us that people have spent years working on, and that aligns with the values of an open space bond that was a community-wide vote. So I think it's time to go forward.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the comments, and one of the reasons why I asked for a pause on kind of moving forward with this is because, you know, there were comments about, well, you know, why are we paying for this as a city and why the county? Is it because of the county commissioner's involvement? And I wanted the specific answer to that question. And I think that we got it in the sense that the inter-local agreement that was put in place after the bond passed, many, you know, pre-pandemic, which is like the before times, is what's dictating who is paying for what on this. And, you know, as I sort of tongue-in-cheek say, the land factory is closed. There is not going to be any more. We only have opportunities like this rarely to, you know, preserve ag land, which was specifically laid out. And one of, and the reason, one of the many reasons why the majority of Missoulians voted to tax their selves, tax themselves with this open space bond because they saw in the long run the need for preserving open space, the need for preserving ag land. That's great that there are those folks in our audience who can grow their own vegetables. I don't have time, and I don't have the proper amount of sunshine at my house to do that. So I am thankful that there are others out there who have, who love to toil in the dirt and provide for fresh fruits and vegetables. And I think that unfortunately, as the world evolves, the need to know where your food is coming from and the ability to create it is going to be more, a higher priority, just like water and the reason why councils before us made the decision to make sure that the city owned its water. So having asked the question of why is it that the city is paying for this, it's the inter-local, I kind of, I have to take umbrage with what my colleague has said because, you know, there is no way to have known that at this point in time, this particular project would come together when they were putting together the inter-local. I don't think anybody's crystal ball is that good. And, you know, I have, over my time here on council, really taken and made comments about when people insinuate that there's something there, there, when there really truly isn't. I am a big fan of the saying, and who's, who it comes from is escaping me at this moment, but it's like the, a lie makes it halfway around the world before the truth has a chance to put its pants on. And I'm really mindful of that because we all here have, you know, a platform to talk about our issues and, and ramble on, like I am now. But what we say matters, and to insinuate that there's something nefarious happening when it's just, you know, because somebody in a very small community gave money and has a history of giving money when the Supreme Court has said, you know, campaign contributions is free speech. Do I agree with that? Totally? Absolutely not. But it is what the system is. We also have a whole system where you can see whoever gives money to anybody through looking, as you did, on, you know, the Commissioner of Political Practices' campaign finance reports. And I think that to imply that there was some sort of like quid pro quo that has been years in the making, just really, you know, these jobs are hard enough without a fellow council members trying to basically imply that there is something wrong and that there's underhandedness or backhand, or, you know, behind the scenes when this, it's truly not. And we're all doing this because we love our community, we want to serve. People give to us because they think that we're good people with good values, who are going to make good judgments. They may not always agree with us, but they feel like they can talk with us and that there's a method to the madness, and they can be, you know, engaged in conversation. And that's really, you know, what we can, only thing we can ask for. And I just really don't appreciate the implication that there's something nefarious happening when there's absolutely no evidence of such. And I think that we have to be really mindful of the, you know, the place we hold and the platform we have, and that our words matter, and, and be very mindful of the things that we say and the implications that we make because they have lasting impacts. And so that is the end of my rambles on that. Thank you much, Madam Mayor, and I will be supporting this. And I am appreciative of farmers because, you know, I enjoy fresh fruits and vegetables, and I have no ability to grow them, so I am totally reliant upon others, and I am thankful that they exist.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And we have very little time left before we need to take a roll call vote and, and then take a five-minute break, unfortunately, because of the recording. And we have a very, we have the remainder of the agenda, which is informational, council comments and public comment. So we generally don't go back and forth. And so, Counselor Campbell, I'm seeing that your hand is raised, and so if you wish to make a brief comment on this, I'm okay with that. But I do want to basically say for the record that, generally speaking, this council has not had back and forth. We did allow, I did allow that, in particular for the ordinance and the referral working on the public camping, camping on public lands because of the intensity of the issue. And so I want just to keep that in mind as you make your comment now. Go right ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity to retort. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, I, you know, as I said in my previous statement, you know, the act of just having a campaign contribution shouldn't, 99.9% of the time, reflect in our ability to make a decision on one issue or another. And, you know, but having said that, you know, it just seems, from my perspective, common sense to me that if I have someone come to this podium here requesting six figures worth of money to put in their pocket, and they've made a contribution, you know, I'm just speaking for myself here, to my campaign, and they're coming up asking that, supporting some broad ideal or some broad concept, but specifically something, put something in somebody's money, I'm going to recuse myself. And I'm not going to do it because the city attorney says I have to do it, or there's some legal justification to do it. I'm going to do it because I feel it's the right thing to do. And I, I don't understand how that seems to be lost in this panel here, so.
That wraps up our council comments. We're going to go ahead and move on to a roll call vote, Connor. So when you are ready.
Okay. We are going to do a roll call vote on approving the Corner Farm Open Space Bond. Let's start with Anderson.
Yes.
Yes, Sarah?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Berlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
No.
That is eight in favor and two opposed. That passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the conversation, and I will go ahead and give us a five-minute break because we need to do the recording once again. So 9:48, we will resume. Public comment. I know. I would say people have had enough opportunity, but.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes. I appreciate it. Yes. I know. I was actually, yeah, yeah. So. Things all were coming in, and I am sorry. They normally look so much. I don't know. Oh, well, you're hot meat either. Try my brain. No, your brain is so far. Be ready. Kind of crazy. I did. She needs to have the, you know, on the side of the.
Of course. Of course. For two towns, they'll be in town. You're firing it so. Yeah. Yeah. Kind of crazy. So. I know. Of course. 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 Okay, folks, it's 9:48. I'm going to go ahead and call us back to order. Thank you so much for the break. We have had quite a bit of engagement, and it is now time for public comment on items not on the agenda. Oh, what's happening? Oh, thank you. It's time for public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the room this evening that wishes to make a comment on items not on the agenda? Three minutes or less, please, and I'll go ahead and put on the timer for you up here.
Mr. Spitzmacher, Big K, Montana, S.P.I.T.Z.M.A.C., Chair. Well, Sundays ago, my tire was slashed right through, front and back, while it wasn't under camera. Well, let's get to one before this. My fanny pack that is under camera of the theft of the items, which is probably trivial possibly, but not trivial, but at the principle of the fact, nobody addressed it for appropriate action at all, not even public safety. My tires got slashed. I left a bicycle in front of the affluent Pau, Pau Relo with the new bicycles on display of being ransacked. Broadway! How many people stop to look at the affluence of the Pau Relo? How they destroy bicycles and steal them? They're stealing seats. I hear this stuff, but if they don't come to the council meeting or make issue out of it, they're advocating it. So I parked my bicycle specifically after I fixed it and I booted it, and the slashed tire is obvious. And they poked it Sunday night, Saturday night, Sunday morning, that I couldn't ride it to the church for breakfast, so I took the bus. I didn't address it until the afternoon when I went and got a tire pump and a repair kit. One of the staff members walked by, and one of the security people at night walked by. They were kind of enjoying the fact that there was something wrong with my bicycle. I couldn't pump it up, so it wasn't a minor leak. It was a major leak. I just walked it across the street to image, fixed it, took pictures of the nice puncture and pumped her all up, took it back to the Pau Relo, set it up just like I had it, and the puncture mark was obvious in the tire. Made a 919, did a. Made a 919, did a non-911 call, and documented it for a resource number. That went out to Jill Bonney. I told her I'll be assessing it for direct perspective before I pass judgment. We don't care. How many of you people have the wherewithal to care? Who's paying attention to MCAT? Maybe I should be addressing to the ones at MCAT that nobody gives a flying whatever. As far as drugs, more is better, most is best. Let them take out the middleman, just bring them in, let them enjoy them. Because it'd be great entertaining to watch them die. I wouldn't care. Somebody asks, "How come you don't care?" Nobody cares what I just said. And public safety did not show up in regards to the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher.
By Moore, M-O-O-R-E. It was really an interesting discussion y'all had. I've got an MRA project summary here on Opportunity Place Multi-Use Redevelopment. They want to hand out $2,492,736. It says total TIF request, that $2,492 again. Then it says estimated new property taxes per inch increment from development, at least $50,000. That is totally misleading statement by MRA. Total misleading statement. That implies... That implies that, well, if you approve this project, the TIF amount out of $8,551,000 project, this money sounds like it's taxes, doesn't it? Any of you know what it really represents? Do any of you really know what it represents? It represents the... In part, I don't know the exact amount, I don't have all the records, of... What I'm thinking leads into my thoughts on that recent discussion that you all just had. It's false. Why do you let them write $50,000 taxes? It's not taxes. The excess above the level when the project is taken over or done gets funded, payment to MRA. MRA passes it back out to other developers. Rivera Project, Opportunity Project. It goes back to them. It's not used as taxes. And if you say it to the actual population out here, the definition is, "Oh, and I've already done this three or four times." Is that three minutes?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
You've got the point. The rest of, I can at least finish the sentence. That... Well, I better not say that. I'll make a better presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else in the audience wishing to make public comment? Not seeing any. All right. And online, Mr. Larson, go right ahead, three minutes. Mr. Larson, we're not hearing you yet. Can you unmute?
Matt Larson, more than three, thanks. You voted on the item before us, just before the break, regarding Cornerstone, and Mr. Campbell, whom I applaud for bringing up the issue regarding gifts and the nepotism associated with the deal, and Commissioner Josh Slodnik. I just wanted to direct everybody towards the city's own employee handbook regarding ethics and gifts. Montana code annotated says gifts larger than $50 basically should be reported. So basically, what everybody should have done there was said whether or not Cornerstone had made a donation to their campaign, at the very least, and maybe even abstained from voting on that. But instead, what we saw was probably some official misconduct by definition of the handbook. But again, that's been sent to the city councilors. And, you know, I thought that that was quite hilarious, that the city attorney weighed in and found no issue with it either. But I think that this is a no-brainer, just like councilperson Tom Campbell. But obviously, there's other people on the council that, you know, might be giving other gifts, you know, that don't have any issue with this.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Larson. Okay, folks, that wraps up our public comment for the evening. And so we'll just go through and move on quickly to communications from the mayor, and then general comments from council. It's a longer night, I think, than we expected, but we had a lot of robust conversation in this room tonight. I want to mention that the bathrooms at Johnson Street are open. And this is a long time coming. It's very exciting for Missoula. The Johnson Street Emergency Shelter is a temporary location for an emergency shelter, as we all know. And it was never built to be an emergency shelter, in particular, to have, you know, 160 people in there slipping on the floor, sleeping on mats. It is, you know, it's not built as an intentional shelter, but we've done the best we can to make it work. And the opportunity to work with Missoula Economic Partnership, their CEO Grant Keer, and some private funders, donors, put several hundred thousand dollars of private money to match the city's contribution because that property, as you all know, is purchased using tax increment financing dollars in order to do an eventual development, redevelopment of that entire site. We've done that by building Missoula Rail Link Park. And so we were able to replace the sewer and water lines in North Avenue, which made those modular bathrooms a year-round amenity. And that is something that we've already heard stories. The Pau Borello Center opened them after all inspections and everything was a go on Tuesday, last Tuesday. And we heard that immediately, some people were practically in tears with the beauty and the ability to take a really nice private shower. So it's something that we should all feel very proud of, and it's something that you'll hear me talk about more and more. I want to make sure that the private sector understands there are real ways that they can help partner with local government to achieve very real important outcomes for folks that are living unsheltered and without a home in our community. So I'm very excited about that. And then, as has been mentioned in the past, those modular showers and bathrooms are just that, they are modular. And they can be picked up and placed on the back of a semi truck, and they can be placed in another location when that is deemed necessary. So really excited. I also want to recognize a community member that has been exceptionally helpful, and that is David Edgell, retired from Edgell Construction. He has given countless hours and oversight of his expertise on this project, and then also expansion of washers and dryers in that facility. And quite frankly, his donation of time and expertise has been very valuable to us and to the entire community. So his granddaughter painted a beautiful mural on that, and we'll be making sure that we get that out in a newsletter and on Facebook, and there'll be more to come on that. But I just wanted, I wanted to mention that. The other thing I want to mention for folks, and this is everybody that is housed and unhoused alike, is that we have a very significant heat spike coming. You know, again, speaking of folks that are without shelter, the Johnson Street facility and the Pau Borello Center do serve as day centers for people that may not even be sleeping there. So folks can take refuge in those locations. The Pau Borello Center staff does ensure that water is available outside of both of those locations. And then, of course, if you're inside, there's, of course, city potable water inside for folks. I also just want to tell everybody in Missoula, please keep safe. This is really significant health consideration. Don't exert yourself, stay in the shade, drink water, and look after your loved ones, and obviously, in particular, your furry friends. This is not a time to load your dog in the car and go shopping. I'm notorious for having my furry friend with me, but this is not that time. So with that, I will go ahead and pass it on to any council members that wish to make council comments. President Cheryl, I'll start with you.
Yeah, thanks. I don't have any comments beyond what you said, but I really appreciate your words and your updates, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Appreciate the update on the bathrooms. I think the bathrooms and the showers are great, and I think it's important, and the stories that we've heard so far that you shared with us kind of illustrate the need. I also believe the locker exchanges happened, so we don't have those set up yet because we need to figure out how that all will work. But we've taken a giant step on, you know, checking off another thing that people have told us is important on that front. And I just appreciate everybody at the city jumping when we had the opportunity to do that, and a special thank you to the YMCA for their donation, because it just, it worked out, so...
Indeed. Thank you very much for the reminder on that, Counselor Nugent, absolutely. And thank you for jumping on that when you saw that opportunity. Really appreciate the wise contribution there, that's really excellent. Counselor Farmer?
Yeah, just really quickly tagging along to your heat advisory, and knowing that we just heard the wildfire smoke-ready week, I just want to remind folks that that things are going to dry out quickly. And I just heard today, locally over the weekend, my agency responded to over 17 wildfires over the weekend, all human-caused. Luckily, they were all put out, but I think moving forward, when things dry out, we're not going to be as lucky. So just reminding folks to be aware, fire-aware, and obey all the laws, and we can hopefully have a smoke-free summer.
Yes, thank you for that. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thanks so much, Counselor Farmer, for pointing that out. There was, you know, a wildfire started by fireworks just up the Miller Creek drainage, and it was a little too close for home. And also definitely appreciate the comments around protecting our furry friends, as I am a proud dog mom. And just, you know, also pointing out the fact that even walking on the pavement can be incredibly difficult, or can be harmful, and that there is a strip when you walk over Bear Tracks Bridge, because we realize that some of the building products heated up more so than your traditional sidewalk or what had been there before. And so if you're walking your dog in the mornings or afternoons, when it's slightly cooler and across Bear Track Bridge, use the white strip that's laid out there. I think there's some signage, it's not, it could be better, but there is some, but I just, I've seen folks, and always want to point that out to them. And just thanks, everybody, for, you know, trying to look out for one another during this hot spell, and go get yourself a furry friend out of the Humane Society. It would be amazing if someday we were in a position where we could transform that building into something completely different because we didn't live in a society that had unhoused animals as well. So one can dream, but they are, this summer is an excellent time to get a furry friend. So help clear out the shelter and let that expansion happen. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Just wanted to say I hope everybody had a good and safe Fourth of July. My youngest son was in a float in the parade in Big Fork for the Fourth of July, so my husband went and walked in it with him. And this was never on my radar before. There is a huge parade in Big Fork for the Fourth of July, FYI. And it's maybe not quite as big as our homecoming parade, pretty darn big. When you were approaching Big Fork, there are fields full of parked cars and shuttles taking people into town for the parade. So if you need something to do next year, just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will pass.
Okay, thank you. And council members online, any comments this evening? No? Counselor Jordan says no. And Counselor Vasika?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July holiday celebration. It is my favorite holiday. I am a big fan, love this country. It's quite interesting because there is a lot of argument that actually the Second of July should be America's Independence Day, because on July 2nd, 1776, is when the Continental Congress voted in favor of independence. But then, two days later, delegates from the Thirteen Colonies adopted the Declaration of Independence. So with that being said, I say that we just celebrate both days, or the whole week of that. I just wanted to say that we, we as Americans are similar in just that. We are all Americans, and we all, even if we have our differences, we can always go back to that. We share that. We share our nationality with each other. And I think that that's really important to remember. And I also wanted to thank all my colleagues and the mayor for bringing up all the fires. Be fire-aware, you know, remember Smokey the Bear. Big shout-out to Smokey the Bear for putting all that fire-aware stuff into my brain for my entire life. So it's really easy to make a mistake and have the entire states have the consequences for us. So be very aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vasika. Counselor Carlinho, I saw your hand came down, so I just want to make sure, unless you had comments this evening?
Yeah, thanks for calling on me. Just a couple of quick comments. I think while the Corner Farms project is a great project, and I'm happy to support it, I am concerned about the way that this body responded to Councilman Campbell's concerns about campaign donations. Frankly, campaign donations and buying out of political campaigns is one of the, you know, main causes of bad politics in the United States, and I think many politicians are succumb to their political donors. And I think it is, you know, an area for concern. And while I'm not, you know, confident that it's necessarily affected this project, although it may have, I do think that this is a real concern for Missoula politics and politics across our country. Council members on this body have, you know, received six figures of campaign donations from for-profit political action committees like the Realtors Group in Montana. And, you know, these political donations really do affect, you know, political decisions across the country, and we should not brush that off, especially as politicians. But, you know, on the other hand, between the last city council meeting where we voted on the ordinances around survival camping in this, we saw the Supreme Court overturned parts of the Johnson versus Grant passed decision to make it to where ordinances like the one that you all passed will not, no longer officially violate people's constitutional rights. And I just want to say that we're better than that as Missoula, and if people don't have a safe place to sleep at night, we should not be fining them, moving them, or criminalizing them, no matter what the Supreme Court says. I am ashamed of the city of Missoula and other local governments and mayors across the country who have advocated for this to get overturned, and I wish you all had not done that. But now, those ordinances will have less constitutional challenges. So I just think that was a huge step backwards, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlinho. That wraps up council comments, and I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 10:10 PM. Thank you. Thank you.